Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, December 18, 2018, 7:00 p.m. regular meeting of the City Council's successive agencies. The meeting will now come to order. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Dane Johnson from the Chaplain for the West Covina PD, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by myself. Would all rise, please.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for so many blessings this evening, and we come tonight to say thank you. We have so many resources at our disposal, and we live in a great country, a great city, and so tonight, before we get started with the business, we just want to say thank you. And so, Father, we ask that you would help us to be wise, to be good stewards of our freedom, of the resources that you have given us. Help us, Lord, to distribute them well, and give us wisdom and discernment, and help us, Father, to work together in unity to make this the greatest city in the San Gabriel Valley and beyond. And we just pray this in the name of Jesus, amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Deputy City Clerk, will you please come along, please?
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Present.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temu.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report after the closed session?
There is nothing to report from this particular meeting, but for the sake of public transparency, I will point out that we did have a prior closed session meeting, we had a special meeting, and the City Council authorized the city attorney to file an appeal in the Bryley versus West Covina lawsuit.
Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, no changes to tonight's agenda.
Okay, at this time, we have one recognition of the retirement of Police Department Record Specialist Sylvia Luna. May I have the police chief come down and join me? It's my honor just to come down here and just stand with you, but I'm leaving it up to the chief to say what he has to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize such a wonderful lady and just a great employee. Sylvia is leaving us with just a little over 20 years of service, and she's been gone five days, and we already miss her. I'm trying to give her the opportunity to come back, but I think she just wants to be with her family and really enjoy things. Sylvia is a longtime resident of the city, really cares about the city, the department. Every day, came to work with a positive attitude, and just one of the sweetest people I know. And I appreciate everything you've done for the department and for being a good friend, and we're definitely going to miss you. And now, we're going to kind of put her on the spot. She was kind of dreading this part, but I told her, you know, keep it down to 15, 20 minutes, and she got a little nervous on that one, but anyway, I'll let you say a few words.
Well, he knows how long-winded I could get. But it's kind of difficult when you're a little overwhelmed and you're a little nervous. So, I want to say from the bottom of my heart, I will truly miss the department. I was ready to stay home and take care of myself and my family, and I really wish I could stay a little longer, but I think it's time. And I will miss the city terribly. I already do. I already texted one of the girls, can I come back? I've been as busy as can be. And it is very true, when you're retired, you're busier than when you were working. I don't know how I did it, and it's only, it hasn't even been a week yet.[278.02][278.02](Laughter) Thank you.[282.08][282.08](Applause)
Now, if I may, I have two to present to you. One is that the City of West Covina and the City Council is pleased to recognize Sylvia and Luna for over 20 years of consistent commemorative service to the community until December 18, 2018.
Thank you very much.[305.83][305.83](Applause)
At this time, we don't have any adjournment motions, so now we will move to all communications. I realize we probably have quite a few residents here about the homeless, and I'm not quite sure if they all want to give and speak, but if they do, they're more than welcome to. But if not, first of all, I would like for everybody that's here that wants to represent for the homeless, please stand. I would like to recognize everybody that's here for the homeless tonight. My thanking, the reason why I'm doing this, just in case they all don't want to speak, I want everyone standing here to understand why they're all here. Thank you. Okay, we will open up all communications. Please call the first one, please.
The first speaker is John Shoemaker, followed by Sue Aguino.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Welcome to the two new members. Buckle up and hold on, it's going to be quite a ride for you. But welcome. One of the things that, I shouldn't say I like to talk about, is actually, wish we could not, has to deal with the homeless in our community. I don't think there's anybody here who doesn't want to help people who are homeless because they lost jobs, lost their homes, or whatever the case may be, and a lot of them need help. And I hope we continue to get those people help. But I think what a lot of the members of our community are upset at is the criminal element that is there, that when you go to a store and somebody kicks in your car, or you are going down the street and somebody steals a purse, or you're at home and somebody's banging on your door and breaks through the glass, you know, or somebody who is wandering down the street yelling and screaming, who is, you know, drunk or on drugs, obviously they have problems. It seems to many of us that things that I would be arrested for, if I was wandering around drunk, I would probably, you know, get in trouble for, but if I was not known or I was known to be homeless, I might, somebody might look the other way. I know our police and fire are very busy, and they have to make decisions, you know, to do things. What I'm hoping is that this council will look at ways that we can reprioritize things, because with anything like that, if you know you can get away with it, more people come to get away with it. And that's going to hurt, you know, the work that all of you are doing to bring business into our community and things like that. And so, you know, again, there's no doubt that people need help, but there's some issues that when there isn't a response, it makes people feel unsafe. And there's a variety of reasons for it. I don't think anybody, they want it to be solved, not to place blame. And I honestly believe, when I talk to people, is they don't want to hear about meetings, they don't want to hear about, you know, those types of things, that they, they want to see some action. And I think everybody agrees, there's, you know, it's going to take you some time, you know, to do things and stuff like that, but I don't think the honeymoon period will be extremely long, you know, from that standpoint, until people see results. And when we have things that occur, or when we've had meetings, we've had people point out where drug transactions take place, you know, and, you know, there's times that the people who would handle such things aren't aware of it. But then, we don't see anything happen when they're made aware of it. So I think we need to see some sort of action, at least when it comes to the criminal side of it, and what we can do for the people who are just, they need help, you know, that they don't know where the help comes from, you know, those types of things. And if we can do that, I think you'll gain a lot of support from the community, because a lot of these people who are here tonight, they want to help too. They're willing to get involved, but it's hard for them to do it because they don't have the authority. It doesn't matter how many times we call certain agencies for help, if those agencies don't come out to help, anything from social services to police and fire. So, you know, if you, that's what I think you need to concentrate on, and you'll, I think all the people here will support you in trying to get everything accomplished. So, thank you for listening to me. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you. Now, Sue, would you hold on one second, please? At this time, if I may, I would like to introduce our new state senator. If she would come up, please. Our new Senator Susan Rubio for our district. Just give a warm applause. Thank you.[636.16][636.16](Applause)
Thank you, Mayor. Council members and members of the audience, of course, it's an honor to be here, to see the newly-elected members be up here. And to all the residents, just that they came for the homeless situation, I will be in contact with Mr. Glenn Kennedy and make sure that we are in connection with you as well, to see how we can help you move forward with the homeless situation. So, thank you for having me here. But if I can take this moment to ask the newly-elected to come down, so I can present them with the certificate, would that be okay? Okay, thank you. Yes. You just got reelected, right?[672.32][672.32](Laughter) And Mayor, why don't you come down here, too? And my apologies, I had so many events last week, so I was hoping to have been here when you actually got sworn in, but nonetheless, I want to recognize all of you, and here's one from Mr. Tony Wu, and Dario Castellano, and Letty. So I'll just read Letty. "On behalf of the California State Senate, it is my honor to congratulate you on your induction to the West Covina City Council. West Covina residents are fortunate to have you serve as our council members. I applaud your commitment to community and look forward to your success. You will bring to our region and share constituents. So congratulations, and I'm so honored to work with you as well." Thank you.[715.63][715.63](Applause)
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.[718.63][718.63](Laughter)
Let's not forget the thumb up, right?[724.44][724.44](Laughter)
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me speak. Sorry for the interruption. Thank you. Thank you. And just to all the residents out here, I will have my office in the same office that Dr. Red Hernandez had his, and please feel free to reach out if anything I can do for you. I have a lot of staff available, ready to hear your concerns and meet with you, so thank you for this opportunity to speak with you, and have a happy holidays. Thank you.[752.23][752.23](Applause)
Thank you, Sue, for your waiting for it. Now, you can come up now.
Can I make one more announcement?[764.13][764.13](Laughter) And I do have, I'm sorry, a community swearing in, and I would like to take this moment to personally invite all of you to join me. It's going to be January 12 at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse, and I'm not being presumptuous, it's a big place, but I've been a teacher for 17 years and taken my students for so many productions, plays, and it's such a historical place for me, and it's very meaningful in terms of the historical context, so please, all of you, join us. I'm going to have the CEO pass out some information, so everyone has the invitation, so thank you. Thank you.[798.31][798.31](Phone rings)
First off, I'd like to thank you so much for having us tonight and letting us voice our opinions and bring our concerns to you, and welcome to Letty and Dario. I'm really looking forward to having the opportunity to work hand-in-hand with you guys and solve some of these problems. As you know, the West Covina Residents Take Your Neighborhood Back page started in the summer, and we started very small, and now I think we're at 780 people, and I get calls daily as, you know, resident concerns and things, and there's a lot of them that are here tonight, and I'm really proud of all of you that are here. It really means a lot to have people come out for their neighborhoods, and I just want to, we kind of targeted things that we, each person was going to say, so we didn't say the same things, and we wanted to keep it, you know, kind of quiet, so that we can all go home before 2:00. So first off, I want to say that I was really concerned about finding out that we only had six and seven police officers out on any shifts. That's a scary thing for 17 square miles, and now it explains the response times when you call, because they can only be so many places. That needs to change, and that has to change for all of you. It has to change. Something has to happen. We need to get some more officers on these streets, because bad things are happening, and they're happening fast. I get calls every day of things that have happened, whether somebody's house is broken into, somebody at Vaughn's has been assaulted. I had, I have lots of problems at Vaughn's. I have lots, well, I go around and kind of put myself in the position, probably more so than anybody else, trying to document a lot of this, and I see a lot of it. But the one thing I was going to talk to about tonight was a response time, was a house fire, now which this is separate from the homeless, but I'm going to start, just because it's the response time. I had a house fire on Florence and Franciscato, and they butt up to each other. Half of Franciscato is county, the other half is West Covina. Well, the house fire started in, on Franciscato in a barn. I went out in my backyard, and I could clearly see, the fire was huge. My husband's UPS driver in Baldwin Park saw it from the street in Baldwin Park. Massive fire. We were out there for probably 25 minutes, and I'm like, where is the West Covina Fire Department? And I, everybody's calling on my street. There was probably 30, 40 people calling, where is the West Covina Fire Department? I called the dispatch myself, twice, 911 and the direct line, and she says, look, we have it handled. County is responding. I said, no, you don't understand, the fire is not just on Franciscato, it's butted up to the property, and now these men and all the residents are out there with hoses and taking residences out of the houses of Florence because none of our fire department came. Even the, even the officer that was there to block off the street that wasn't West Covina, I said, where's the fire department for West Covina? These guys are with hoses, trying to save their properties. Then 40, I think it was 53 minutes later, here comes the fire department, blaring down the street. I don't know if they didn't get the call, I don't know if dispatch didn't give it to them, but I got to tell you, I know that there was at least 30 calls, that I could tell you, of residents that were calling, please get here, please get here. Well, three houses on Florence, the back of their property is burnt. One garage is completely gone. And the response times have to be looked at, the dispatch has to be looked at. Some of the things that, maybe retraining, I don't know what it is, but to go 50 minutes and see houses burned down is scary. So that, that's, the response times, I think, need to be looked at. And then, I'll go on to the homeless, and because I get so many calls, and we have so many input with the residents on Facebook, it has increased so much. I have seen faces this week that I have never seen before. There are so many young men on bikes with backpacks. I watched drug deals go down. I watched them cut weapons out of trees. I watched them around young girls, the things that they do. I have three daughters. No girl should have to go through that, and I see it on the street. There are people walking around our city like zombies. They are drugged out of their minds. Some might be mental illness, I understand that. Some are drugs, some are currently drunk, whatever they're doing. They should not be allowed to walk around on our streets. Homelessness, I understand, is not a crime. I've been told that since the very beginning of these meetings. It's not a crime. We need to enforce the laws that we have to keep our citizens safe, and we don't feel safe. We aren't safe. We are not safe. Our business owners don't feel safe. The ladies at Michael's are terrified to walk out at night. They go to put their trash in, dump the trash, the homeless are in the trash cans. They're terrified. Senior Baja, ladies are terrified. Their husbands come to pick them up. They have an easement between the two buildings, and they're packed in there with their mattresses, they're all doing drugs. We were driving down there in front of Del Taco the other day, they're out like this, holding each other's arms, shooting up, right there on our street, right on Glendore Avenue. That cannot be acceptable, and our police can only do so much. When they're trying to keep everybody safe and try, and it's not even safe for them to only have six or seven officers out there, for them to be for each other as teams, that's not even safe. We're putting them at risk. Everybody's at risk. Something needs to be done. And there's other cities doing different things. I've been contacting all these different cities, they're using ordinances to change some of these. Granted, you can't, we get strapped with these laws from Sacramento, and I understand that. Everybody's got their hands tied, but we can't sit on our hands anymore. We can't have administration that says we can't do anything anymore because we're mandated by up here. We can't do it. We have to think outside the box, and we're running out of time. Long Beach is using ordinances now, and they call it a no chop shop ordinance for the guys that are walking around with the 10, 15 bikes and breaking down bikes on the streets. They're using ordinances, it's called a no chop shop. If you have more than one bike, and you're riding a bike, and you've got pieces of bikes, the officers can come up, they could take those bikes from them, that's it. No chop shop, because so many homeless guys were stealing bikes and recycling them. They're not taking them because they want to ride them, they're recycling the metal. Our houses are getting broken into. Right now, at Covina, we just got a notice that a homeless man with a knife chased three elementary school kids into a 7-Eleven. These guys are empowered, they're not being tested, they're not being held accountable for anything they do, and it's become lawless, and we cannot have it anymore. Our residents deserve more, you guys deserve more, our children deserve to be safe, and here you are. And I really, I, I can't wait to work with you guys. And I want to be a working part of all of this with the city, but it's kind of hard when you feel like you're just, you can't get it done. So, I thank you so much.[1286.15][1286.15](Applause)
Next speaker is Carol Mulner, followed by Elsie Messman.
Boy, that's a tough act to follow. First of all, I would like to greet our new council members. Dario, I haven't met you yet, but it's a pleasure to see you. Letty, hello. Tony, Lloyd, everybody, let's, let's see if we can get some of this done. I didn't stand up as a person here to address the homeless situation, although I did come partially for that reason, because it is a problem. And another, on the other side of it, though, is the budget. We have a budget, and we, in my home, we stick with our budget, and if we have to do something beyond that, we find a way to find extra money to do it, instead of changing what we laid out. And I'm asking that perhaps, oh gosh, read my lips, no new taxes, might not be a bad thing to readdress. Might not be. The police situation is horrible, horrible, and maybe in addition to the budget, maybe we should put that on the ballot. Maybe we understand now, because there are only seven officers out there at the most, maybe we do need to readdress it, not in terms possibly of overtime, but in terms of new officers. I don't know. I'm not going to take my whole five minutes, I'm just going to say that from my point of view, perhaps that is something to look at. And I thank you all, I look forward to seeing the great things that are going to happen from our new council. Thank you.[1411.01][1411.01](Applause)
Next speaker is Elsie Messman, followed by Bridgette Cusamano.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, I can't even pronounce my own name, and welcome to the new council members. My number one item is number 14. As a resident of West Covina, I pay $348 a year for a maintenance department. In other districts, in the same district, some of them pay $464 a year on our taxes, and I expect to pay for the upkeep on our paseos, the water, the lights, the maintenance, etc. But it seems like the city is trying to get everything they can from us. For Maintenance District 1, there's 57 acres, District 2, 6.9 acres, and District 4, 166 acres. Why are we only taking, talking about three districts? This should be split between the whole city, not just three districts. The staff report is not very good in giving details. This is a city project, and this regarding, by the way, people, big league dreams, the outside, and should be supported by all the residents of West Covina. District 4 is already paying $204,000 for personnel services, $121,700 for administration and overhead, and $75,000 for best management practices implementation, for a total of You just laid off 21 maintenance workers, and the rest around management are doing, not doing the maintenance work. And whose salary are we paying for? There's no maintenance workers out there, and for this amount of money, something is wrong someplace. And this should not be approved until the city agrees that each household is responsible for their share. Number 16, we just laid off 21 maintenance workers to balance the budget, and now you want $238,000 for the maintenance for the restrooms in the park. May I ask, who cleaned them after these employees were laid off? Did staff, including the city manager and his assistant, not know that restrooms have to be cleaned? This is very telling that the city management and his staff did not know what the maintenance workers did. This should not be approved, we have to stick in with our budget. Remember, this is a landscaping company. And number 29, regarding the homeless, if I recall, one meeting I attended, Chris Freeland asked residents to pressure, I believe, Hilda Saliz for the money for Measure H that was passed by the residents for the homeless. This is a staff's job, not the residents. In my closing statements tonight, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and to all a good night. Thank you.[1631.88][1631.88](Applause)
Next speaker, Bridgette Cusamano, and Jim Gribich to follow.
Hi. Stand. Hi, my name is Bridgette Cusamano. This is my mother, Paulette Cusamano. It's with, first let me premise by saying, we're longtime residents. My mother has lived here since 1960. It's with divine providence that she is able to be here tonight, by my side, after the ordeal that happened at her residence on Monday, December 10, at 3:05 p.m., when a 25-year-old male suspect came to the door, rang the door.
He rang the door, and he asked me, I didn't open the door, I talked to him through the glass door, and I told, he asked me for money and water, and I told him no, and I walked away, and as I walked in my kitchen, I heard the noise, he was knocking the door with his foot, kicking the door.
asked residents to pressure, I believe, Hilda Solis for the money for Measure H that was passed by the residents for the homeless. This is a staff's job, not the residents. In my closing statements tonight, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and to all a good night. Thank you.
Next speaker, Bridgette Cusamano, and Jim Grivitch to follow.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Cusamano, this is my mother, Paulette Cusamano. It's with, first let me premise by saying, we're longtime residents. My mother has lived here since 1960. It's with divine providence that she is able to be here tonight by my side after the ordeal that happened at her residence on Monday, December 10th, at 3:05 PM, when a 25-year-old male suspect came to the door, rang the door.
He rang the door and he asked me, I didn't open the door, I talked to him through the glass door, and he asked me for money and water, and I told him no. And I walked away. And as I walked in my kitchen, I heard the noise, he was knocking the door with his foot, kicking the door. So I told my husband and our friend that was there, there's someone at the door, get up, get up. So, my husband's just a salesman, but he kept kicking and kicking the door. So my husband and our friend went there and nobody opened up the door, they turned the alarm on. And my husband went and turned the panic button on and the audible went on. And the suspect was still there kicking and trying to...
Excuse me, it's a solid oak door and the upper half is leaded crystal glass. He put his fist through the leaded glass, trying to get to the deadbolt to gain access. Their friend was by the door jamb, waiting for him to get his hand in there because he was going to snap his wrist. So to speed this story along, when my mother, my 78-year-old mother called 911, she was advised by the 911 operator. And by no means am I here to throw that woman under the bus. She did her job and she did it very well. She kept my mother calm and told her what to do, but she also advised my mother that I have no units to send and you need to go, she either said go or contact City Hall.
And I told her, I will go. I thought I will go to the meeting. And she kept me very calm, you know, she told me, just sit down and relax. And I told her, how can I relax when the man is practically in my house? And when he bashed the door, the glass, he cut his wrist. And then he went and he washed his hand, I have a little fountain, he washed his hand and the audible alarm was going on and he just put his fingers through his ears. He went and he laid down on my lawn. All this time, nobody showed up. And I was waiting and the girl was, kept telling me, just stay calm, you know, stay calm. And I said, when someone's coming? And I dropped on the floor on my knees, I was so scared. And I told her, I think I'm sick, I need some help. And she was willing to send me help. And I said, no, I'll be okay. And I got up and the guy was still kicking and kicking. And so then...
For probably whatever seemed to be an eternity, I don't know, I was at home. Having been, and currently I'm a court reporter for LA County and reported 20 years of criminal activity, I had never thought that I would ever, a day would ever come where I would have to stand in front of the City Hall here and recite a tale of vandalism, attempted vandalism, on my own family members. And I have since been advised by the DA that he's in custody and he's been charged, they filed four felony counts against him. Felony burglary, felony robbery, resisting arrest, and I can't, the last one escapes my mind, but it's a good one. And there were four. And he'll be, his next arraignment date is on January 7th, and I do intend to follow this case. But the reason I'm here is to solidify what Sue said, that the response time, there's obviously some sort of internal problem, I don't know where it stems from, I'm just a court reporter. But when you've got two elderly people unarmed and you've got a dispatcher honestly telling her, hey, I have no units to send, there's something wrong. There's something wrong and it needs to be resolved. And the call went in, I checked with the central station and the panic button went off at 3:05 and that was pretty much when the call went into the...
3:06.
3:06, yes. So, and then a few days later, after some conversations with a contact at the CBS News Desk, who was interested in the story, and he said he was going to reach out to the West Covina Police Department. The very next morning, we received an unannounced visit from Lieutenant Tibbetts, who came in to apologize to my parents for what had occurred. And the lieutenant admitted, admitted to my parents and me, that the dispatcher operator did make some errors. He said, I quote, "Some mistakes were made." And I said, did you listen to my mother's 911 call? Was my mother not clear in saying, in describing what was going on? And she said, he said, no, your mother was very clear, but she made some mistakes. He said he had listened to the tape. Now, personally, I don't think any of us, and he said he was going to talk to her, that she wasn't going to lose her job, but he was going to talk to her. Well, I don't think she's the person that needs to be talked with. I think I'm here to tell you and shed some light, as Sue did, that you guys are short units. And, you know, if the dispatcher, she's being prevented from doing her job because there's not enough patrol units. So, that is my story. And thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
The next speaker is Jim Grivitch, followed by Jerry Patrus.
Jim Grivitch, congratulations to our new council members. Because of the previous speakers, I'm actually going to alter somewhat what I was going to say. As you know, I'm the Chair of the Audit Committee and we are responsible as a committee for transparency, especially with the finances of the city. I'm very concerned about that issue right now. The reason why I'm concerned is there have been no financial reports. There should have been financial reports from last fiscal year by now. This is December, we do not have a fourth quarter report for last fiscal year. It should have been out. There has been no first quarter report for the first three months of this fiscal year. It should have been out by now. The Audit Committee members, there's been three requests to have an Audit Committee meeting to actually discuss the status, the financial status of the city. And at the moment, this time, their meeting has not been scheduled. I'm very concerned about the money. The folks that have talked before me talked about possibly money is a part of the problem and I'd like to frame that in a very particular way. It's how the money is used that is a problem, not how much money is available. And I want to make a big distinction between those two things. There's always money available to do what you want to do. There isn't necessarily a money available to do everything you want to do. In solving the city's problems, whether what the ladies were talking about before me or any other problems for that matter, the city has to make a conscious decision to use its resources wisely. There was reference to people make mistakes, people make mistakes. But the important thing is to not let it happen again, to make sure the resources are where they need to be to take care of the problems. And I'm just going to use one example. Tony, I'm not going to be picking on you, but I'm going to talk about the item that you have on the agenda later about possibly hiring some more police, that's what it said. You've heard me talk many times about we have excessive overtime in the city. And to me, that item would make more sense if we talked about hiring more police in the context of reducing overtime. In other words, balancing it off. That all should have been in your action, not just the part about hiring police. And my point is that you all know that the city has serious financial problems. We've been spending way more than we're taking in in our revenue. And we're going to go bankrupt if we don't change that. And I hope that isn't the reason why we haven't been seeing these financial reports, because the news is all bad. Because if we're continuing to spend a lot more than we're taking in, the problems that we're talking about right now are going to be minor compared to bankruptcy. This is a very serious issue. And I hope that we have some accountability and some transparency with what's going on with our money. Because we can't address our problems if we don't have that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jerry Patrus, followed by Andrea Moreno, on behalf of Supervisor Hilda Solis.
Good evening and welcome, it's nice to see you. You have a challenge and I know that. I'd like to just comment on 18 and 20, the Mother May Is. Our city spent considerable time and energy planning the budget. We had these community meetings and I really felt good about the process, that we had input, the staff had input, the council had input. The new fire and police department staffing models were implemented and believe me, you can go on Facebook and look at campaign things, you know that rank and file aren't happy. That's a concern, it's not an ideal situation, but life isn't full of ideal situations. Management has a responsibility to determine staffing and policy within the budget and the policy that council sets out. I feel that both police and fire chief were given a challenge and they met the challenge I've gone back and I look at the budget presentations on their thing, they did a good job. I'm from the public sector, I know the challenge that they were faced with. And I'd like to just address the overtime. I have a real problem with overtime. I'm from Peter Drucker's School of Viewpoints. In the last century, he used to caution about long-term use of overtime for staffing because employees get used to that salary and you can't get them off of it. I recall there's been discussions of hiring regular police officers and I do lean towards wanting to hire more police officers. But I want to urge you to keep the budget the way it was adopted and within those parameters because we teach, well, we can deficit spend, we can outlast things, I'm not saying that right, but it is important to keep a plan and let that budget play out for a while. You have challenges, but please don't bring back overtime staffing, it really is a problem. Look for ways of hiring additional people. I'm concerned a lot that the easy answer will be to join the other 250-some cities that passed sales taxes, property taxes, hotel taxes for public safety. There's got to be limits. At some point in the public sector, we all have to say enough is enough, we've got to control the spending. This year is the year for us here in West Covina to try and do that and we can. We've got some good talent up here, we've got some new ideas and we can do it. And we residents need to be realistic on the expectations too. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrea Moreno, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council and of course, West Covina City Council and residents. My name's Andrea and I am here on behalf of Supervisor Hilda Solis and I would like to read the following statement. We all know that, like many urban areas across the United States, Los Angeles County is facing a homelessness crisis. We have about 53,000 people experiencing homelessness on any given night. I am encouraged that LA County Boarders demonstrated their commitment to finding solutions when they overwhelmingly approved Measure H, a quarter cent sales tax raising $355 million every year for 10 years to help combat homelessness. However, we know that this will take time and that there is no single solution to homelessness. I have worked with the members of the LA County Board of Supervisors to implement comprehensive strategies to help prevent and end homelessness and we have already seen some progress. In a short time period between July 2017 and March 2018, over 10,000 people entered crisis, bridge and interim housing funded at least in part by Measure H. And over 5,200 homeless families and individuals have secured permanent housing specifically because of Measure H funding. However, the county has sought to address the shortage of affordable housing by using county general funds and leveraging other public funds to build affordable and special needs housing. In fact, earlier today, the board approved $50 million for the interim housing capital funding pool to be used to advance proposed temporary housing projects. I know how important it is to ensure that our cities are our partners in the fight to end homelessness. That's why I fought at the Board of Supervisors to secure $2.6 million for the Council of Governments and homeless planning grants for cities to join the county in finding solutions to homelessness. And many cities in the San Gabriel Valley have opted to join this fight and have submitted homelessness plans, which will be implemented in 2019. Measure H has allowed us to train almost 1,200 sheriff personnel on homelessness-specific first responder best practices. Measure H has also helped the county fund homeless service providers, adding more than 1,000 new jobs across the region to enhance our service delivery system. We are also looking for creative solutions, such as the mobile showers that are operating every Thursday at Whittier Narrows to help connect individuals to services and housing. I look forward to working with the city of West Covina to maximize the opportunities made possible by Measure H to address homelessness, our homelessness crisis. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Elliott, followed by Ray Edmondson.
Good evening, City Council. How exciting, oh, my name's Bill Elliott, in case anybody missed it. It must be, must feel so exciting for the new city council to be assembled. I really have a lot of confidence in the new city council and I agree with Jerry, there's a lot of talent up here. Mr. Casalamos, I have a lot of confidence in your ability with numbers. I know you're going to bring a wealth of knowledge and information to the city and hopefully you can take a leadership role in that. And Letty, I know you have a lot, you're bringing a lot to the city as well and I'm really just happy to see you guys up there. On another issue, Susan Rubio, not my state senator, okay? Susan Rubio came to the United States as an illegal alien and was deported. And I don't know what this love fest is with this person, but maybe you guys haven't seen the video where she and her sister, who's also an elected official, bragging about how they're the first illegal aliens to get elected to California, elected office, they're proud of that. And believe me, when it comes down to advocating for you, or me, or an illegal alien, that's who she is. That's who she's going to advocate for, that's who she does advocate for. As far as the, I was really happy to see my neighbors here tonight, Pauline and Bridget. It's really tragic what happened at their home. I live one street over from them, I see them frequently. Make no mistake about it, that person that was trying to break into their home, if he was willing to put his fist through a leaded glass window in a door, he was willing to put his fist through that 78-year-old lady's face. There isn't much more serious of a police call than burglary in progress. That is about as serious as it gets. Maybe I'm wrong, but it's way up there. And for the response time to be 10 minutes is just, I'm sorry, that's unacceptable. And I don't know what it's going to take, it's going to take something drastic, City Council, and I wouldn't want to be any of you because you've got some hard decisions to make. I hate taxes, I think it's a coward's way out, you might have to do it. And I understand that, being somebody who is more libertarian on taxes, you know, supposed to fix the roads and keep the city safe and have a competent fire department and we don't have any of that. We're suffering as a city. Part of the reason we're suffering is because we have so much crushing unfunded pension liability. It's crushing the city. People want to argue with me about that point, but it's the God's honest truth. And you know, we're a, we have little police department, a fire department, they're not big, they're not these huge monoliths like the Sheriff's Department. It's like 100 people, you know, sworn officers, if we're lucky. Yet we have, you know, there's a big joke in the rank and file, there's somebody that works for, you know, the city of West Covina as a captain and he makes $344,000 last year. And they call him Captain 344. Because it's a big joke, because it's sticking it to the city of West Covina, we're taking that money. Nobody in West Covina that works for the police department, including the Chief of Police, should make such a vast difference, shouldn't be such a vast disparity in the income of the average citizen. That's how they become elite. And that brings me to my next, my next point. You know, I've seen this happen over and over and over with new city councils, they come in bright eyed and they have, you know, big dreams and aspirations and I see it in every one of them. And then they start getting really friendly with the city manager. They start getting really buddy-buddy with the staff. Let's go to... "Let's go to lunch." And then it seems to me that sometimes the city manager thinks he's the member of the City Council. He's not. You are his boss and he needs to understand that and he needs to keep his professional distance and so do you. Please don't become intoxicated by the power of being on the City Council. It's not that big of a deal, honestly, and we have a city to save here. There's so many things we need to do. The biggest thing we need to do is address this issue with the police department. Maybe we have to go to the sheriffs because there will not be a captain that we're paying $344,000 a year to. That guy, he's probably going to be a two-striper with the Sheriff's Department if we go sheriffs. And that's why they don't want it because it's going to interrupt their little pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ray Edmondson, followed by Laura Viera.
Hey, my name's Ray Edmondson, 20-year resident of West Covina. I'm here to talk about items 18 and 20. Councilmember Woo's mother may eyes for bringing back the Fire Department and Police Department overlap shifts and, or Engine 5 and the overlap shift. We had, what, like six budget meetings, five or six budget meetings over a span of several months and we went over this budget with a fine-tooth comb. I know, Tony, you brought the budget home and went over it line by line. I know other people in this room went over the budget line by line. We have a lot of very talented people. We had a tough decision to make. Do we want to raise taxes so we can keep these services or add more services? Or do we want to not do that and have to make some cuts? And we make the decision, we made the decision to make some cuts. And I'm worried that the decision to make those cuts and vote down the tax was temporary for the sake of pleasing voters and now we're going to reverse that because that's not appropriate. If we made a decision, we need to stick to that course. If we, we had, we had the option to raise taxes on the November ballot. We had a council member propose that. That got voted down by the council and we chose to not do that. So now we've made our bed, we need to lie in it and figure out another solution for this. We can have another election, we can bring back taxes, but just deciding to reinstate these things after we already made that tough decision to cut them to help fix our financial problems, that's not acceptable for me. Thank you.
Next speaker is Laura Viera, followed by David Williams.
Hello, Council. My name's Laura Viera. I'm a 30-year resident of West Covina and welcome to the new council members. I am an advocate actually for those experiencing homelessness in our area and I'm not talking about, you know, the criminal activity. I'm talking about more of the folks that are having issues with mental illness and they became, it kind of came to my attention, I guess I noticed the increase in homelessness probably about four years ago and maybe five, I guess it'll be five in January. And befriended several, several of our homeless residents in West Covina. I'm very active with East San Gabriel Valley Coalition for Homelessness and we're currently running the shelter right now and I'm spending a lot of long nights hoping that people that really need help can have, you know, a warm cot at night and maybe a blanket and even a shower. Recently, some of, many of the homeless in our area, they tend to trust me, the ones that maybe are not, I guess, pulling the bad things that have happened to our residents and, and maybe are not the criminal activity. I contacted the police department a couple of months ago because I, it was brought to my attention that our actual homeless residents are being taxed by a group in West Covina, a gang called the CW. And they're being charged $29 a month and it's for their protection. It's a protection tax. And the reason I'm bringing this to your attention, I'm not on the Facebook page and although I do know of the Facebook page and the reason I'm bringing this to your attention this evening, the city management has been very supportive and they are always quick to respond to me and they're always just fantastic people, especially Nicole, fantastic people. I called the police department and on the evening that one of our homeless, his tent was slit because he refused to pay the tax to the CW, which is a gang that's active, I guess, in our city. And apparently, when I called the police department, they brought up that there was not enough police and I should call the city manager's office. They threw it on them, that apparently it was, it was an issue because of budget cuts. I was surprised. I brought it to Nicole's attention. She immediately, immediately responded and I contacted the police. I was able to speak with a member of our HOPE team who then shared with me that they would look into it. It's been a couple of months, the homeless are still being taxed. These are mentally ill homeless. They're still being taxed for the protection tax and I really don't think that this gang should be able to, these are the criminal homeless that are breaking into homes, that are stealing bikes, that are walking up and down the streets that are, you know, high, they're drunk, whatever it is. They are now trying to establish dominance in the city and it's really, really, it's very concerning and I thought you all should know about it this evening. I've been waiting for feedback from the police department for a couple of months. I've not gotten any, which, you know, they don't, they don't owe anything to me. I'm sure if they're conducting investigation and then, you know, they're, they're doing their diligence, but it's very concerning and I thought you all should know about that as well. Thank you.
The last speaker is David Williams.
Hello, Council. Mr. Mayor, I would like to say we're saving the best for last, but I would say several people in front of me are going to certainly be hard-asked to follow. This will be a two-tier thing. So I have good news and I have bad news. So the good news is, is that I want to welcome the new council members to the panel, or to the council, I should say, and say that I had addressed an issue, Levon Michelle Street, I had addressed an issue there with regards to traffic. The police department has been outstanding in terms of trying to address the issue there with the understanding that there's a lot more city than just Michelle Street that they need to function on. But I did get a call back from the city manager's office directly. I also talked, spoke with Councilwoman Lopez and I was pretty pleased to know that the issues that we've been addressing for quite some time are being addressed and in the manner in which they were addressed was very professional. So I want to thank you for that. So with all good news, there comes a little bit of bad news. So the bad news is that it's my understanding that the police department is, is still negotiating with the city. I understand that there are budgetary issues. I understand that not everything is absolutely a police issue, but we are bogging down our police personnel with issues to where they can't even respond to this lady's mom and dad's house. And I don't think that it's necessarily a thing where the police department didn't want to. I think that we have our police department pulled in so many different directions and we're doing it with inadequate manpower that we are going to have days like this and probably even more so often. My understanding is that since the passing of AB 109, Prop 47 and 57, and for those of you who are not familiar with that, you need to look that up and pay close attention to what it did to the state of California. My understanding is that crime is up approximately 300% statewide. Unacceptable. What does that do for a city like West Covina? It puts us into a position to where we have to now react to what the city is, I mean, to what the state is imposing upon us. That's where you guys come in. If you ask me, I understand that taxes isn't always, raising taxes isn't always the, the answer, but I also understand that inadequate manpower in the police department and asking a group of individuals to go out and do a job that we already know we're setting them up to fail once they go out there is also not fair. It is absolutely not fair. I've been fortunate to interact with several police officers from the West Covina Police Department and I don't think I've come across not one that hasn't cared about the job that they're doing out there in the field. But it's the city's responsibility to get in behind them and demonstrate that they have the support of the city and that the city's going to do what's necessary to make sure that this city stays protected. Now, just because we have more police officers doesn't absolutely mean that we're going to rid the city of the homeless and so on. However, I'll say this, this is about deterrence. This is about that when you drive from the Tin Freeway and you go from the Tin Freeway all the way down to Franciscito, how many police cars do you see during that time? It's about visibility and it's about giving the police department the ability to go out there and demonstrate that yes, we are here and we'll deal with whatever issues that we have to deal with. Once again, it comes back to you guys. So in closing, I ask this. You would never hire a receptionist without giving them a PC or giving them a typewriter, depending on what age you are, okay? You would never, you would never hire a receptionist and not give them the equipment and tools to do the job. Do not have our police department going out there trying to protect the city that you haven't given them the appropriate manpower, the ability, and I'm not talking about in overtime and the amount of money that Mr. Elliott mentioned that this individual collected is beyond me. I won't even go down that road, but let's not put the police department into a position to where we're sending them out there to do a job that we know that they can't, can't accomplish. So again, I don't want to go over, but I do want to say give some consideration to that. The city of West Covina is a great city. I've been here for 14 years and I, I'm absolutely embarrassed to say that this is the first, maybe second council meeting that I've been to. But I think I've come at a good time because I think that there were some members of the city council that I probably wouldn't have been pleased with had I showed up here about six months ago. So with that said, give some consideration to the PD. We need to become more competitive to the agencies that are our size. We need to attract the best people that we can attract to continue this tradition within the police department and let them go ahead and do what they need to do. But we need to show that support. Thank you very much for your time.
And that was our last speaker. Before I turn it over to the city manager, I'd like to make a comment. First of all, to the lady that had this issue with them trying to break into your house, as a council, we're very sorry this happened. This should never happen and I hope it never happens again.
Thank you.
And to Sue and Glenn and to all the residents who showed up for the homeless, thank you for coming here. As this council, you can be guaranteed that we want to work with you 100%. We want to do everything in our power to make this move forward and solve this issue. You know, it's, it's an issue that can't be solved overnight, but I think in collaboration with the council and the residents, I think we can come up with some ideas. And I am looking forward to more of your meetings that I can attend and more solutions that the residents may come up to help the city council. We will come up with solutions and we hope that you can come up with solutions that we're going to all work together on. I want to thank you, thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight. City manager, would you have a name?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. There's a variety of items I want to speak about this evening and I'm going to hold the homeless comments to the last that I made, real quick. City council asked me to make an announcement, since we have a nice audience this evening, about upcoming community workshop regarding the BKK development. I know this wasn't discussed this evening, but I want to make sure that the public, since we have a large audience, knows about this. Thursday, January 24th at 6:30 PM at Shadow Oak Park Community Center, as well as Wednesday, January 30th, 2019, at 6:30 at Cortez Park and Community and Senior Center. Both of those are open to the public and the city staff will be facilitating a workshop to seek additional input from the community on any proposed development that may occur up there. Also, I want to make sure everybody understands the ENA with the St. Poli Group has expired. At this time, the city council has not agendized to extend that ENA, all right? But we are still going to have these community workshops because again, we think it's, the city council has expressed its interest in the importance of getting community input on any potential development up there. Next, if I could, there's speakers talking about budget updates and the annual audit. The first quarter budget update is on the January 15th agenda. It will be on there as well as a discussion on the overtime in the police and fire departments. With the reduction and the changes and the deployment models of police and fire, we have seen a reduction in the overtime for both departments. There may be, well, I don't want to give away too much, but there's a little bit skewed because we have sent police and fire to serve on strike teams and the fires up in Ventura. But those are funds that'll come back to the city eventually. Regarding the audits, the auditors have not completed their report as of this time. We are, I'll get back to the audit committee with a date when the auditors can present it to the audit committee. To the, I apologize, is it Cousimano family? So first, I mean, anyone here would give their, I mean, heartfelt sympathies that you guys had to go through an incident like that. The very good news is we do have a wonderful police department and they caught the bad guy. And to go over, yep, he was arrested because you didn't have all the, the information for burglary, attempted robbery, vandalism, resisting arrest. The DA has filed the charges and they believe they have a good case. So that's, yep. So we're very excited to have at least one additional person off the streets. With regards to, let me see if I mentioned anything else. Talked about those various issues. All right, let's go ahead and address some matters with regards to the comments made for the homeless. First of all, as the mayor mentioned, and I think I can speak for the rest of the council, thank you for coming out tonight, giving us your comments because the city does appreciate you taking the time to come out here and you're really taking your time to make an announcement and share with them your concerns about our community. Homeless is a significant challenge facing not just West Covina, but all cities across California. Saying that, we want to focus on what we can do here in West Covina, okay? Because it is a regional issue, but we here want to address this issue to make sure that we can resolve it. In the past, we've talked about the various things that we are doing. So I just want to share with that for those of you who have not been part of our previous meetings about what the city has been doing. Annually, the city provides what's called community development block grant funds to a variety of nonprofits and provide everything from food services for those who have lower income, clothing and whatnot. We also provide funding for what's called the East San Gabriel Valley Coalition for Homelessness. We talked about, like I said, some of the nonprofits like Corey's Kitchen, Love in the Name of Christ, Assistance League of California. We've been working closely with the County of Los Angeles where about, what's that, a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, there was a targeted enforcement with members of LASSA, the Department of Mental Health for the County of Los Angeles, as well as the LA County Sheriff's Department to do outreach for the homeless population in our community, not just along the county wash, but also throughout the city of West Covina. If you're not familiar, we have what's called the HOPE team. That's two members of our police department who were out on patrol during the week, interacting with the homeless population of our community, trying to see if they're willing to get the services that they need. In addition, we partner with other agencies, police agencies, Azusa, Covina, Glendora, where we have what's called a mental evaluation team that goes out on a weekly basis to all these different cities to interact with the homeless populations. So doing all of those, we also, excuse me, we've also provided the funding to the County of Los Angeles for rapid rehousing for a homeless population here in West Covina, as well as other funds to provide for homeless services. The County of Los Angeles has said West Covina is a model city because we have stepped up to address homelessness, not just in West Covina, but in the area. But I'm telling you tonight, that's just not enough yet or we wouldn't have a homeless problem, all right? So this evening, I know Mr. Casas has a report on the agenda. We're going to share with you that we do now have a partnership that we'll be putting in place in the new year with Union Station. Union Station is an intake for our homeless population here in the community, very similar to LA Mission. So as of right now, our officers or the mental evaluation team, if they are seeking assistance to put homeless individuals into the system to get the help that they need, they go to either Union Station or LA Mission. By having that partnership here, they're actually going to dedicate a caseworker two to three times a week out there on the streets with our HOPE team, interacting with the homeless population to try and get them more help. We're also working and we're hopeful, we have a grant application in with the County of Los Angeles for Measure H funding. For those of you who aren't aware, Measure H was a sales tax measure that was adopted, goodness, I want to say a year, a little over a year ago, year and a half ago at this point, which is about a half cent sales tax that everyone here is paying if you shop here in LA County. That generates several million dollars here in West Covina. We are in the process of seeking grant funds to bring some of that money back to our community in the form of caseworkers and other support for the homeless population. There's plenty of money out there right now for homeless shelters. At this time, the city's not seeking those funds for homeless shelters. We're working with our regional partners to help find where there might be a good place for homeless shelters in the region, okay? What I mean in the region is the East San Gabriel Valley. There's homeless shelters that have recently developed in Pomona, there's homeless shelters in Pasadena and other locations. There's been additional housing programs that put forth because of the homeless population that have been veterans. So those who serve, there's, there is fortunately a lot of additional funding being put towards them to help resolve some of those issues. But again, that's still not enough. But again, that's still not enough, so that's why we are working with trying to find additional partnerships. We had a speaker this evening talk about how other cities are doing, I think he said the chop shop ordinance. So those are things that are being shared with other cities to try and see if we're able to do so. The challenge we have, and I want to make sure everybody understands this, the city of West Covina, the employees, the police, the fire and the city council, part of their duty is to protect the civil rights of all residents of West Covina, homeless or otherwise. Okay? The criminal element, if they're homeless or not, the police and fire department needs to address those. Okay? So it's not, that is not, in my opinion, a homeless issue if there's a crime occurring. That is a police issue. And that is something our police department needs to respond to. Okay? Homelessness is an issue that we're, as communities are facing. It's not the individuals, it's the homeless issue itself that needs to be addressing. And that's what the cities are trying to work on, to try and find that solution. I think some of the speakers said there's not a single silver bullet out there to resolve this issue. And so that is something that's to be challenged for both the city staff, the city council, to try and find out what resources are out there that we can bring into our community to help address this issue. I will be working closely with the police department to make sure that our officers are out on the street if they see something. They have to respond to it. I'm concerned when I hear comments from residents saying they don't feel safe in our community. Okay? That is something that's a reflection of our, not just the city, but our police department. And so we need to make sure that we're staying on topic to address those issues. But I also want to make sure, if you as a resident or a visitor to our community, if you see something, please say something. Call 911 if you see something. All right? Our officers will be responding to those calls. If you're concerned about people aren't responding to calls, we will be able to hear that and we'll be able to look back at those, those calls for service. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think I've responded to some of the comments. I know we'll have a little more, more further discussion on the items this evening. I want to continue to work with the relationships with the community, but I do want them to make sure that they're aware. I don't know, Ms. Presion, do you need to read this on the record?
No.
No? Okay. We have, the city is in receipt of a letter that has been sent to the city from a group called Public Council. They represent the homeless population. These groups go out and actually sue cities who violate the civil rights of homeless populations. So while I assure you, we are upholding the civil rights of the homeless population as well as other populations, we want to make sure you be aware that the city has that obligation because if you haven't noticed, cities like Santa Ana, Pomona and others have been sued and they do lose if they violate the civil rights of any homeless individual in a community. All right? And so you also will see that some of these organizations force upon, based through the courts, that you establish homeless shelters in your community. So rather than being told we have to put one in West Covina, we're trying to work with the neighboring cities to find a good location so that all of us in the region can benefit from that homeless shelter. So saying that, I will return it back to the mayor so we can go ahead and move forward with the balance of the business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we shall move to our consent calendar. I spoke to each of the council members before and we're going to have items. I am going to poll number, item number 16. Mayor Pro Tem Wu wants to poll number five and number 11. Councilwoman Lopez wants to poll item number four, item number 17, and item number 12. And Councilmember Castellanos wants to poll number 13, 14 and 15.
Okay. Now we have, okay, now...
Let's go through that one more time. So five...
Okay, we're starting out with, we have four, five, mm, seven? No. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 and 17. Okay, now let me poll those two. I have a motion to accept the rest of the consent calendar.
I'll move the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second. We have roll call, please. Roll call, please. Ms. City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passage 4-0. Okay, first item was number four. That's Councilwoman Lopez.
Okay. I understand that item four is a state law, but I just want to make sure that it's being regulated for the health and safety of our residents. I just don't want to see it go out of hand in our own city. I read the ordinance, it was pretty, it was done pretty well, and I hope that it was a comparison with other cities that are implementing the same ordinance. And I understand that this is going to be effective January 1st. The only two questions that I had is, is there a cap of vendors and is there a distance from each vendor? That was the only question that I have had.
So the ordinance as drafted indicates that there are, there's not currently a requirement that they be a certain distance from each other. If the city, there is a provision within the ordinance that says that if in the future we want to regulate within parks, additional regulations such as distance and that sort of thing, that that can be accomplished via resolution rather than having to amend the entire ordinance itself. But currently as drafted, there is no distance requirement between vendors. To the rest of your question, there are sight, there are distance requirements as they relate to, you have to be at least 1,000 feet away from schools and at least 200 feet away from farmers markets.
Thank you.
I think we went through last time regarding if you, if the vendor go to the commercial area, they can even operate like 24 hours?
Not quite. Well, so state law is essentially this ordinance, so to be clear, this is second reading. This ordinance is consistent with state law and so therefore our ordinance does exactly what state law says we can. And state law says that we do have the right to regulate within residential zones, which we do. We say that you can't, they can't be operating at nighttime in residential zones. In a, in a non-residential zone, commercial, industrial, et cetera, if state law says, and this ordinance says, if there are businesses that are open at that same time, well, they have the right to compete with those businesses and they can be open too. As long as they're nearby those businesses, then they're okay. That's state law and that's what our code says.
And I remember we approved last time, we have to, they have to the health department and they need to have a license permit.
Correct. So you are required to have a business license? Correct.
And if they're selling food, they must have a health department.
And a health license, that's correct.
Yeah, so they need a two license, okay, and hang on their vendors, so...
Correct.
So, so, but who is the, who's the enforcer? So, okay, who will go over there to check them out, to make sure they have a proper document that they can sell their thing? The reason, my worry is, okay, I know this is state requirement for this vendor allowed to sell on our street, but the point is this, we, we have the people in the store, they pay rent, okay, and they might be taking away their business and then there would be impact, okay, for the people that don't want to, okay, and they pay rent and they say, forget it, I'm just be one of them, then we become a, become a problem. So, so how we can avoid it, okay, this situation to minimize the, the potential problem for our people paying rent and in, in the, in their premise, they doing their job and pay us sales tax and doing their thing?
I think that those are all points that were presented to the state legislature. Unfortunately, they decided to move forward and introduce this law that says that street vendors have the right to operate even in front of some of our local businesses. So we have to comply with that requirement. I will say that, you know, the enforcement arm is, you know, really our code enforcement and police department for, with regards to, you know, our licensing. LA County Health Department is also someone who goes out there and then does enforcement. You know, kind of like they do out there, they go out there to our restaurants and do enforcement or check to make sure that they have their ABC in their window. That's, they're the enforcement arm from the county.
So, so the following, the question would be, I know code enforcement, so, so is from the police department or from the health departments or, okay, who is going to enforce this? I, I think the problem currently, we only have a two code enforcement, okay, and, and staff, okay, for the, somebody called in, they're coming out. So, so how can we, who is going to enforce this? To make sure they have a proper document and they don't compete with our legit business that paying rent? So, so, so we want to, okay, we, we allow them to do this business, but at the same time, they have to comply our code in this, meaning they must have a business license, they must have a health department license for, in that way, they're selling something is, is, is a safe. So, so who's going to enforce? And currently, we only have two staff. Okay? And do, do we have any people we can enforce this to make sure they, they have a proper document?
So this will be one of those things I would argue is an unfunded mandate from the state. They say, here's the law, you enforce it, you're required to do so. So the people are responsible for enforcing, that would be code enforcement, police department and business license inspectors as well from the city's end. On the county's end, would be LA County Department of Public Health. Those are the people responsible for enforcing.
My last question would be, okay, I understand that we have to do this, okay, but do we have enough of a T's, okay, for, I know last time we already approved with this code in this, but do we need, maybe attorney can answer, do we have enough, okay, T's based on what we try to do an overlap so to protect, okay, the business at the same time, okay, the resident, you don't want to have people selling vendor on your neighborhoods or residential, okay, areas, okay, that, that maybe create some issue?
This ordinance essentially does as much as we can legally do. So if that's not enough, we need to talk to Sacramento. Any other questions?
Yes, I do. I was reading the ordinance and I know about, it's just fair competition with the brick and mortars. I know, as you mentioned, that they can compete with them, but reading the ordinance, they can't be stationed, right? They have to keep walking and moving?
So, well, there's, there's two issues. So one issue is the time of day. There's a requirement essentially that if, if it's nighttime, I talked about this previously, if it's nighttime and the sidewalk vendor is located within 200 feet of the business and it's late at night, then they have the right to essentially compete with that business. That's what state law says. So that's what we're doing. As far as use of the sidewalk, they can't block sidewalks. I'm trying to, there's, I know we can't block disabled access and I, I believe that there is a limitation on staining in one location, but I need to find that. Oh, it's just if it's in the residential zone? Okay, so within the residential zone, they cannot, oh, there we go. In residential areas, stationary sidewalk vendors are prohibited and roaming sidewalk vendors cannot stay in one location for more than 10 minutes in a residential zone.
Now, are they, are you done?
I did read that ordinance, but on a commercial zone? Ken?
I don't believe that there is a limit on that, provided that they're not blocking access. So they can't park in the middle of a sidewalk to allow people in wheelchairs to walk pa, to, to go past, for example.
One question I have, are they allowed to go on, say, a business private property? Or they have to stay out on the sidewalk? Because my question on that is that you have a place, for example, the McIntyre Square, and they sell hot dogs, they have a place that sells hot dogs. I wouldn't want this people that's parked right out in front of this hot dog place and be able to sell hot dogs to a whole place. That's what I'm saying, the private property, they're not allowed on there, are they?
So this, this ordinance regulates their use on public sidewalks?
Public sidewalks, okay.
And within, essentially city-owned property?
Okay.
Parks.
As I remember last time, you say residential, they know, okay, they cannot operate, okay, the latest, what, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock? 5:00 PM, right? So 5:00 PM and they have to, okay, move around, okay, nobody stop 10 minutes? Am I right?
Correct.
So, so if they're doing this by 6:00, they're still doing it? So, okay, and they just want to get more business because the time's still warm, the summertime, and the kids coming out trying to buy? So who's going to enforce that? So maybe some resident calling the police, say, hey, somebody exists the time still outside my, my house or the public area selling thing?
It's known different than what they have done in the past, which if someone calls 911 or calls a police officer.
911, that's not 911.
People call 911, just like people call 911 when there's a flower vendor at the end of the freeway off route. So it's very similar in that. The police department will respond and if the person doesn't move along, they'll issue a citation.
And then, okay, the question, another one would be, if they have a residential here and a commercial here and there's a public corner, can they at corners stay there stationary, stationary, okay, and selling flower or selling fruits or food? Can they do that?
Well, there's...
If it's a private property, they have a residential and commercial.
So there, there's two items. One is if it's city property, then, and it's just going to depend on what the zone is in. Maybe, you know, at, at some point, you have to draw a line where they're, they move from a residential zone to a commercial zone and at that point, the, the rules change. So it just depends on what street corner it is.
Yeah, I understand what state tries to do is make some people can make a living on that, but at the same time, I want to keep the city clean and, and, and pretty, okay, and, and nice. We don't want a bunch of vendor at each corner, okay, and, and they're selling their thing, okay, and we become a police stage to go to check their license, this and that. So I don't know how to discourage them to come to flooding our city in all the corner and have a vendor over there selling like downtown. Okay? That's why we in the suburban, we don't want the downtown feeling, okay? So, so what we can do, okay, do we have any way besides we put these T's over here? Okay, is that good enough? Okay, and to, to make sure we don't have, we don't have a flood with vendor in our city.
So if you don't approve this ordinance, then we dramatically lose our ability to regulate. If you adopt the ordinance, we do get to regulate, albeit less than you would like.
Yes, well, one last question. The vendors, and I understand when you say downtown LA, they have like different things. Are, is there any regulation on what they use and how it looks and so forth like that?
The ordinance does not dictate appearance or anything like that. They are, the ordinance does require that they have a health permit and that they do have a business license. Other than that, it doesn't really regulate.
I just didn't want to see shopping carts. Yeah, if they make that a shopping cart as a, their cart, but that's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez, okay, and do we have like a regulated size? Okay, what kind of station, okay, what kind of car they can have, okay? Just like you don't want a shopping cart, you don't want something like extremely, like not presentable?
So this ordinance has a definition of what is regulated and it defines sidewalk vendor as essentially meaning a non-motorized vehicle. That would include shopping carts. So they're sidewalk vendors. So if you're selling from a shopping cart, that's a non-motorized cart essentially. What's the difference between a shopping cart and a, I don't know, a hot dog stand? The difference is one you can see through and one you can't.
A shopping cart belongs to a shopping center.
That's right.
It doesn't belong, it's not an individual unit.
Unless you purchased a shopping cart yourself or what have you. And you're right, absolutely right. But for purposes of, of this ordinance, they're essentially the same.
Okay, if we have another, do you have a motion?
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passage 4-0. Item number five is Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, just like last time, I, I really have an issue with this ADU, the requirement, okay, and this ADU requirement for the, the last size, 12,000 and setback 25 feet, okay, and that, and that's basically almost none of our resident, beside the less than 20% of resident, okay, and they might be, can apply. But I just mentioned last time, if some of the property on the hillside, then maybe last side 20,000, the usable pad, maybe only four, 5,000, okay, and then, then put this guideline, they can, they can still do the ADU. I don't think it's fair for the people, okay, for resident, the, the property right for, okay, less than 12,000 and they cannot... okay, less than 12,000 and they cannot, they cannot build an ADU. Again, okay, like, like last time I mentioned, okay, 35% of lot coverage already a very strict guideline for people to build in West Covina. Some other cities about 45%, some city even 50%. Now, I think we, we have 35% of lot size coverage should be enough, which people to overbuild their property. And I, I, I agree, I, myself, I don't want to live in the high, okay, density, okay, and cramped, okay, neighborhood. By the same time, okay, the, the housing crisis we have, we need to let resident, okay, to build their, okay, parents' home or the children's, another second unit if the, the, okay, the lot size allowed. So I really want to make a motion to, okay, amended to, okay, follow the state guideline, okay, basically, no lot restriction, but the city has a 35% of this restriction and the setback should be, okay, and the similar to the state, the 5%, okay, 5 feet, okay? So in that way, and then, the second unit cannot be bigger than the, okay, primary home more than 50%. So meaning we restricted them, they cannot build too big, but at the same time, cannot more than 12, 1200 feet. So this is my motion to follow the state guideline, okay, so that's what I want.
I'd like to make a comment. I'm, I can't agree with that tonight, can support that, because our planning commission went through this quite distinctively, twice. My problem with is that they can already build their ADUs. It's already, they can already build them. If they just stay within 5 feet of the house and behind it, they can build it through it, there's no problem with it. But they want to build way back on the back of the lot. And I think what we're doing is that we're just going to be cramming too many houses into too many small lots. And as it is right now, that we don't have to have them have their own parking places, the way it is on it. You start putting them back there and then you put two or three people in the back house back there, you need them to have a car, now you have more cars. I think right now they can have the ADUs, it's already, they've already passed that, they can do that. So I, I can't support that tonight, so.
Can I say something? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I want to rebuttal regarding the car, okay? I, I say, I mentioned so many times, and the car problem is not about the ADU, okay? I think we walk around the city, okay, all the time, and we see car parked on the street. Even they don't, we don't have ADU, okay, some of the neighborhood, they just park car on the street, okay, and they don't park their car in the garage, okay? And this is, again, coordinator's reinforcement issue is not about the ADU issue, okay? ADU issues allow people to, to build if they need it, okay? I, I can guarantee not everybody want to build an ADU, okay? ADU, it will cost money, okay? You will go to planning, pay the planning fee, pay the permit fee, have to go through the construction, okay? And, and not everybody have a stomach for it. It's only for people that have the need, okay? And the needs for their parent, elderly parent want to live with them, but not in the same room. I went through it, okay, so that's why I'm passionate about this issue, because I have a hard time, that time when my parent live with me and I running out of space, okay? I understand current, a lot of resident have the same situation, they have aging parent, okay, and they need, okay, maybe build a, a second unit in the back, okay, and put their elderly, so they can take care of them. So, so extremely sympathize due to I went through very, very tough time back in 1998, 1999, okay, and, and I have to, okay, ship my parent to my brothers, they, they build the ADU in the back. So, so this is what I regretted, I don't have the chance before they pass away. So anyway, this is why I think we should be equally treating our resident with a lot size, allow them to build no more than 35%, but, okay, go with the, what the state guideline for let people, if they have the need, okay, and to build, okay, to take care of their family. So this is what my, okay, request, I hope my colleague can, okay, consider with this, okay, or they want to alter this to make a little bit more restricted. I'm willing to, to, to compromise, but I think we should let our resident have a chance, okay, to, to look into if they have a lot, and they can even move to, property so expensive, they can move to another area. So maybe we can reconsider with, have some people have a chance, okay, and to take care, okay, their issue. Thank you.
You have a comment?
I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Wu. I think with the 35% lot size restriction takes care of a lot of the potential fear that, that residents may have of overbuilding. And also, as Mayor Pro Tem Wu mentioned, the costs associated with building is prohibitive to a lot of people. And as I've said before, I've tried to find the middle ground, so I'd support Mayor Pro Tem Wu's request to, to take a look at this again.
I do love my yard, yard space is important, but I do would like to see a percentage-wise. There is a housing crisis, the cost of living is expensive. As for elderly, I had my grandmother, most of the elderly doesn't have, she didn't have a transportation, she doesn't have a car. We use dial ride and so forth, and, and one of them is my mother and so forth. But I do agree in, in regards that we go by percentage.
I already make a motion, so do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion?
So I, I would like to clarify the motion. So I understand that the motion, I, I'm counting noses, I'm counting three votes. So that would mean that you would be recommending that, well, so you can't approve a revised version of this ordinance at second reading. So you would need to come back at a future meeting, we can call a public hearing on this item, and then staff would bring back a revised ordinance for your consideration at that point. I guess the direction that I would like and Jeff would like as the planning director would be to know specifically what you would like that draft ordinance to state. As I understand it, subsection G1 would be, that currently says the lot shall be a lawful lot and it be at least 1,200 square feet? 12,000 square feet, excuse me, do we want that deleted? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, okay. Based on the, the state guideline, they have no lot restriction due to we already have a lot size coverage restriction 35%. So you already have, we already have 35%
Okay.
Okay, restriction, okay, why we need a lot size restriction?
Understood. So I, just, just to be clear, so then G1 would be deleted, and then the rear yard setbacks, and then subsection 8 relating to rear yard. So then the rear yard setback would be 5 feet from the rear yard?
Yeah, based on the state guideline, they are 5 feet, but if they are existing, okay, and, okay, but if they have existing structure, they have no setback requirement, but if they are new unit, their setback is 5 feet, okay? I, I don't know, 5 feet, 10 feet, what currently we require is 25 feet. And 25 feet, okay, and it's really, and the plot in the front, basically, basically, you cannot build anything. So, so, so my proposal is go back to what state requirement, okay, 5 feet.
Okay, so then that would be amending subsection 8, and then, so, what's the third change?
The unit cannot be bigger than 1,200, like a state. The state requires the second unit cannot be bigger than the front unit 50% and applies no more than 1,200, okay? So the new unit, if they want to build, cannot bigger than 12 unit, 1,200 square feet and cannot be bigger than the, the main home 50%.
Okay.
This is what the state guideline is.
All right, so I, I understand the votes.
So maybe just follow the state guideline, okay? And if there's, if we have setback to planning commission, okay, I have the public hearing, okay?
So we would return to the city council with a, a public hearing on that item. We would make those changes and then you can talk about that ordinance at that time. So we would need a motion to that extent, so it would be to return at a future meeting with a public hearing, delete subsection G1, add a requirement that the accessory dwelling unit not exceed 1,200 square feet or 50% of the existing single-family structure, and that the new setback, rear yard setback be 5 feet. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No. It passes 3 to 1. Our next item is number 11, and that's also Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I understand, okay, we have a lot of street need to be rehabilitate, okay, we need to, okay, make sure, okay, and that really have a lot of street has a lot of issue. But I understand this is good, we use the CDBG fund, right, to, to do this, okay?
This work's already been completed.
This is done already?
Yes. This is accepting that work, saying that the work has been completed and we record it with LA County.
Oh, okay, then I move to approve.
Good answer.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. Vote call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passage 4-0.
Now, can I have a question?
Yes.
Okay, no? Okay. No, I'm done. I can go home now, okay? So anyway, a quick question, okay? I, I know very nice office, city managers, okay, to put a systematic about which, okay, street at the south side and a couple of, quite a few street, okay, when are doing the, okay, rehab, okay? And I think couple of residents email me, they were very happy, but this is only for the south side, how about the north side, west side, do we have, okay, and systematic, okay, check all the street? Because some street, okay, some look pretty nice, but some street really, okay, in trouble, deteriorate. So what kind of, I know we changing to structure right now, who is in charge to check all the street, which street in the schedule to rehab?
So I can answer that real quick for you, and that is, the city updates its pavement management program every couple of years to get its PCI index, okay, pavement condition. The last time it was evaluated, we had PCI of 78, which is considered very, very good. It's actually one of the best in LA County and actually best in the region. So we're very happy about that. If you get to 80, you're considered, the cream of the crop, your streets are in really good shape. So that's our goal, is to try and get to 80 for our next evaluation, which occurs next year. All right? So there is a list based on the condition of streets from that evaluation that we do every year. And from that list, it determines what streets are the priority streets to be repaved. Doesn't matter if it's north, south, east, or west, it's based on the need of those streets. There is a caveat, though, and that is, when we have funding, like the item that was just approved, that is CDBG funding for streets. That can only be done in certain parts of town, based on the social economics of that part of town. So if we have extra monies of CDBG, we try to do it to help expedite the pavement system in our community.
And besides the CDBG fund, do we use the major, okay, M fund?
Correct.
And we using the major M too, right?
Right, so we have measure M, measure R, Prop C funds, a variety of different gas tax funds, and now with the upholding of gas tax SB1 funds, that will generate about $2 million a year moving forward for the city. However, there, the, the state legislature had a carrot in there. They said, in order for you, the city of West Covina, to get your tax money back, you have to spend some of your general fund dollars in order to get those monies towards street projects. So in order to get that 2 million, the city has to spend, I believe it's around $576,000 a year, a general fund, that we would normally use for other services, like public safety. So that money now has to be utilized for street projects in order to get that 2 million.
So the matching fund?
It's our matching fund, correct. And so that, the, the positive is, is we'll have $2 million additional for street projects that we didn't have a year ago. The challenge is now is, with our tough financial situation, is now having to figure out where that another 576,000 a year of general funds coming from.
And I, I remember Chino, okay, did the presentation regarding how they categorized, okay, each of street, okay, and where, but when I walk around, okay, I see some of the street and talking to resident, some street never been repaid, okay? Some street like been repaid a couple of times. So I really don't know the justification about which street we, okay, choose doing first or second and this and that. So, so hopefully, maybe the city can provide, okay, a, a schedule for the resident to see when their street will be.
So that's the challenge, we're not going to be able to tell you when the street will be paved. We could tell you the ranking of when it can be done, and I think that study's online already on our website. When is based on the availability of funding. So if the city gets more funding in for street projects, we can start dedicating more to that money. I do know that we have a couple of the street projects scheduled for this coming, the current fiscal year, so that'll be moving forward and presented to you for approval here probably the next couple of months. The other part I want to make sure I mention about SB1, was one of the challenges is, until a city ha, your city has a PCI of 80, it can only be used for repaving. Once it goes over 80, then you can use it for other street projects, like traffic signals or other programs, median improvements, those type of things. So we're trying to get that magic number of 80 to free up the use of those funds.
Got it, thank you so much.
Okay, do you have a motion? Move it. Okay, oh, yeah, that's true. No, I want to make a statement real fast on this right here, is that the streets that they did on this, they did a fantastic job on it. This is over where I live, and I seen every one of these streets that they done, and they've done a really great job. All right. Next one is item number 12, and that was also pulled by Councilwoman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, for this Starwood plan, does it start, yeah, I haven't seen the presentation. I know they were supposed to present, but I have not seen a presentation, I have not seen a plan. And I had a question, is this total amount going to be paid by Starwood, including SEQA? And shouldn't a plan be shown first before SEQA is ordered? Those are my questions.
All great questions, and with regarding the SEQA, the attorney to speak to that. The Starwood will be presenting to you at your, um, next meeting, January 15th meeting, I believe we're scheduled for, correct?
Okay.
The intent here is, the hiring of the SEQA consultant is not just to address the SEQA document, it's also putting the, um, other design documents together for presentation to the community. So I want to make sure the community understands that this does not mean a project has been approved, because there will be public input and consideration at the city council level. All this is to start moving forward with some of the initial studies, as well as some of the other documentation that Starwood needs to try and move forward their project. They're footing the entire bill to do this, so there's no city funds being utilized for this project. Let me turn over to the city attorney addressing the SEQA portion of it, though.
So the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, says, it's essentially, it has a very stringent process that needs to be followed for any project. If a project applicant submits something to the city, then the city's response is, requirement is, we need to consider the application, see whether it meets all the requirements, then do a study immediately, we, before, and then we present it to, let's say, we were running to the city council for approval today. Well, you would already have to have had an environmental study done before you could even consider the project. Usually what ends up happening is, the project is designed at the same time as, for a large project, at the same time as environmental review is occurring, because as the environmental consultant learns something, hey, did you know that it, you're going to have these environmental effects? And then the developer says, oh, shoot, let's change the project to solve that problem. And then they tweak the project, then they can change the environmental analysis and say, you know, you don't have that environmental concern anymore because you've mitigated it internally by designing your project or adding mitigation measures or whatever it may be. So this is essentially one of many steps that will be required for them to present for final approval, but this is the first step of many before you get to final approval.
And I want to make sure it's clear to the residents, the community, that this is, part of what's happening is, is that when we did our city's general plan, the downtown plan, there was an environmental review that was already done, that was consistent with it, on the general plan. What Starwood is looking to do is to make a development in our community that's consistent with those plans already in existence, okay? And so they're trying to work within the guidelines that the city has already established in the general downtown plan. And so moving forward, this is actually going to help the city and Starwood expedite a project if approved by the city council in the future, okay? It's not an approval of any way at this time, it's just a blessing to start moving forward the process and expedite space in order to get back and provide additional opportunities for the public to review it.
And I will point out that this particular environmental consultant was chosen by the city, not by the applicant. So the city pays us the money, we select who we want to do the review, and they pay for it. The developer pays for it. Yeah.
You have a question? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Okay, and the question following your answer, okay, we have a two project currently we doing the SEQA. Now, then closing escrow at all. One is Sunset Field, okay, this is Queensville Valley, right? Okay, and they're doing escrow for a long, long time, okay, and currently, we still haven't see the money close escrow, look like, okay, they're still, they're doing the SEQA too, right? Okay, and, and so they in the escrow, they're doing the SEQA, okay, and now we lend lease to them for $1,500, okay, a month for, they're changing to the parking lot for, for the Sunset Field, that we, we sell it to them in the escrow, hasn't closed escrow. So this is my question, they haven't closed, okay, and they, they doing the SEQA, SEQA, okay? At the same time, this project, okay, we do, we, they want to do SEQA, we even have approved plan of from Starwood, okay? We, we don't know what they really want. have approved plan of Starwood, okay. We don't know what they really want to do yet, so they want to do a SEQA. So, in the same token, why we not ask any developer, want to develop BKK, do the SEQA, so we can save a lot of time. So, later on, okay, we can, okay, like this thing, okay, they approve, then we save a lot of time, can start breaking ground, so we can start see our money. So, this is my, my question. Why now we have all the project, can do the SEQA if any developer, they want to pay for it?
I'll try and attempt to answer. Let the attorney help me out. The difference is, is that Starwood is developing within guidelines that cities already established for the downtown area or for where their property is gonna go. Same Poli does not have a project that has been submitted or has enough scope of work that can move forward with the SEQA process. Whereas, Starwood has a concept based on what was already approved in the general plan, the downtown plan.
So, stated differently. So, SEQA says, if you know what you are doing, then you can analyze it. Okay, that's the project. So, we kind of have a far greater understanding of what it is that they're proposing. It might change, but a basic concept. So, you can analyze that. But if you don't know what is going to happen with the BKK property, you can't analyze.
Well, I disagree. Okay, I think for two years, okay, and they already present to us numerous time, they want to build a hotel, they want to do recreation park, okay, there we say they want to hotel. And we want them to build hotel, so we can get the money.
Correct.
The TOT tax, okay, and we want to this development, we already know what they want to do, okay, it's a hotel. Can that be, okay, okay, can be done like a hotel, then we need a SEQA to approve. Otherwise, if we, they cannot build hotel over there, we wasting our time. My point is, okay, and maybe we should let them do the SEQA and doing this thing, see, okay, they can, they can build hotel over there or not. That's my, my question.
So, some environmental review has already been conducted on the BKK facility, and we've got, I shouldn't say we, they have hired a biologist, I believe, to do some of that preliminary work. And that's sort of what this is about as well. This is to do environmental review, so that they can present something for approval.
So, since they spent so much money on this project already, why not let them spend more money to do a SEQA? Is that, can that be done or no? Okay, can they, can we force them to do, hey, how about you do the SEQA right now?
Are we talking about the Plaza? Yeah, so, the issue is Plaza, BKK.
My understanding is.
Right now, there is not a project to be presented to the community or to SEQA to have that reviewed on.
Excuse me. You know, I would love to sit here and talk all night about BKK, but unfortunately, that's not on our agenda. So, I would like to go back to the Plaza on West Covina. Is there any other questions on this? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion in a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Have a vote call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
No.
Councilman Costellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passes three to one.
The next one is number 13, and that's by Councilman Costellanos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Chris, for 13, I just want to run through an explanation, so we could have an overview of it for the residents of what this is and how it helps us.
Certainly. I'll have Alex use to come up if we need, do need you, Alex, so thank you, but, because he is the guru on this. When the housing market crashed several years ago, city saw an overflow flood of foreclosed homes in their communities. Communities, in response to that, drafted these foreclosure ordinances, which required banks to register with the cities their foreclosed properties. Why that was important is, it allows the city to have a single person to go after, to make sure the property is being maintained, to address any kind of folks that are squatting on the property, among other things. And so, historically, what the city has done is just keep extending this ordinance. It does expire at the end of the year, and it's being requested to extend it through 2021. I have, Mr. Councilman Costellanos, and I spoke about this item, and it's the, his interest is to make this a permanent ordinance. I hate to speak for on your behalf. And so, the staff would seek the approval tonight of this ordinance, also with the direction to come back in the next several months to provide a more permanent solution. That's just the ordinance. The other part is, we do have a vendor who provides the oversight of the program and works for, with our code enforcement and the banks to address issues. And so, that was last sent out to RFP in 2015, and so, that is concurrent with the adoption of the ordinance. And so, if the council wishes to review that as well, that's not necessarily part of this, but that can be part of the process if so directed. So, with that, I'll answer any questions, or Alex can do so as well.
Yeah, that's, you answered it perfectly, and I would like to get, you know, an RFP process or discussion about it in place for, you know, for the ongoing duration of the ordinance. It sounds like Chris answered everything successfully, so.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Vote call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilman Costellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passes four zero. Next item is number 14, and that also was requested by Councilman Costellanos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to talk about the RFP process. I know we can't renegotiate or negotiate contracts after bids have been accepted, but I do want to see if we could, on future landscape maintenance awards, if we could try to get better contracts, maybe by the way the RFPs are written. Is that something we could do or try to look at?
Sure. I mean, in full disclosure, you know, we've taken over this. Obviously, there's been a reorg. There's been a lot of people who've left that have been involved in this before. And so, putting it together is, you know, using past scope of work, and then looking at what's been done, what needs to be done. Like, for example, there's some drought tolerant landscaping, right? So, people think drought tolerant landscape, we know that's so wonderful, and it is from a, from a water resource perspective, because you're saving money on water, but there's a different type of landscape maintenance that has to take place. And in some of those hillsides, there's more overgrowth that have been, that has happened over time. And so, in talking to our previous landscape maintenance and in doing the RFP, you know, we kind of came upon these things. And so, there's, moving forward, it will absolutely be refined. So, I can give you that.
Good. Thank you. Yeah, and we did talk about that. I, yeah, I think that's the right direction. As you mentioned, some of, we had some surprises with the drought tolerant plants. So, as we learn more about those and figure out how to potentially save money in the future, let's, let's put resources and time into figuring that out. Thank you.
If I can, also, there's a speaker that spoke up about this matter during oral communication. I want to make sure we address it. The area around Big League Dreams, that's being, is part of this proposal, is what's called the Coastal Sage Habitat here in West Covina. That is fully funded by funds collected by the property owners within that area. That's not any residential neighborhoods. That is Big League Dreams, that's BKK, and actually the city of West Covina. They're paying that for the Coastal Sage cleanup. So, it's not an additional assessment put on any of the neighborhood residents. There is additional assessment, as the speaker mentioned, about the landscape maintenance districts. As you may recall, state law says that when home builders were building homes back in, you know, 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, whenever, in West Covina, areas that they did not want to create a homeowners association for, they said, we will provide these public amenities and then turn over to the city. The city then will charge the residents who benefit from that landscape maintenance district, from that housing tract when they were developed, saying that they would be the ones responsible for paying that tax. That is why it's not assessed for all the residents of West Covina. This is what was established when the properties were sold to the original residents when they moved in, and that was an assessment that was passed on by state law to the city to enforce that for future years.
Any other question?
Yes. Okay, okay, I know currently, this one, what, okay, this one, you, the city award to merchant maintenance company, correct? Okay, we placed, okay, previous one, a test car, right? A test car. Okay, so, so, my question, okay, basically, is, when, you go to the south side, you go to the, all those green belt, and, okay, in, in October, September, who is doing the maintenance, the time for this area? Is a test car or?
So, our current provider is Azteca. So, if you're saying this last September, October, that would have been Azteca. Merchants does our parks, but if it's a landscape maintenance district, so some of the paseos and the hillsides, that would have been Azteca.
The reason I'm saying that is, they did a job poorly, okay, and you can see, they have a lot of issue. I talked to the resident, okay, a lot of dead tree, okay, never get removed. Small, small tiny little tree, I think we plant, okay, and it's dead, it's still there, okay, and it's on the, on the, on some of the sound, on the hillside, sound, on the, on the, okay, it's curb. So, so, that should be removed, okay, and some of the small tree, never, never been trimmed, okay, and we, they told us, they told me that the city planted tree over there, and they do anything. And let me finish. And you see the green belt, okay, you see a lot of kind of obsolete. So, hopefully, this new, okay, maintenance, okay, company, merchant, will do a better job, let, let the neighborhood, they pay extra, okay, the money, and hopefully, they get a service, okay, meaning if I pay, okay, my garden, I want to make sure that they're doing a good job, clean my, make sure my, my yard is, okay, nice and trimmed, and the tree, okay, small tree hedges between. So, so hopefully, okay, this new, okay, and you award them, they will do a better job than currently, okay, what I saw is really, not really presentable.
So, if I can just chime in, West Coast Arbors actually maintains the city's trees and the landscape maintenance districts. And I know we've talked about this in previous council meetings, but the landscape maintenance districts are on a budget cycle. So, it's not exactly the same as the five-year, the seven-year trim cycle. That's what we aspire to be in the general right-of-way. But when there's dead trees on a hillside, that's actually a concerted effort by everybody to communicate, staff and contractors. So, as far as whether or not the blame lies with Azteca or West Coast Arbors, it's probably a mixed blame. Probably, everybody should have had shared responsibility, but it's not Azteca's scope of work to actually remove those trees. Now, as far as merchants, they do a phenomenal job in our parks, and I have no doubt that, moving forward, the communication will be on point, and we will handle any tree maintenance requests, even though they're not responsible, we would get that farmed out to West Coast Arbors.
Yeah. When I say tree, okay, I'm not talking about big tree need, I know, I understand that those big tree need to be trimmed, and we cycle seven years now. Hopefully, mother may I, I can get it to five years if we have enough money to do that. But my point is, the small tiny little tree, okay, and it's not by the big tree thing what I'm talking about. If you can have a chance to drive around, you can see a lot of small, small tiny little dead tree, is on the, kind of our public area. So, hopefully, nothing can be addressed, can remove, okay, and maybe we shouldn't plant any tree if we're not going to water over there, and it wastes our money, and then, okay, and it look horrible. At the same time, okay, the island, okay, it's, okay, that's public area. You can see we coming out like no tomorrow, okay, it's very ghetto-like. So, I think that should be addressed by this, it's the same district. I think this maintenance by, by this group, hopefully, they can make sure that's been cleaned. So, and then, if you go to the, go to the, okay, hillside, and then they have same situation too, okay. So, what I'm saying is this, okay, if we hire them, and the resident pay extra money, and we want to make sure, do we have maybe supervisor or our staff to kind of driving around to make sure the performance is over theirs? If they do do a good job, maybe we will warn them, maybe they should do a, okay, and put, put this out together, perform.
Yeah, we have a contracts coordinator, and we have additional staff that are making sure that our contractors, moving forward, are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing, along with the scope of service, because we have found things that were in scope of service but weren't being taken care of, and those things were addressed.
So, you confidence, okay, this new company, merchants, maintenance group, will do an excellent job, okay, that currently what I seen in the south side and the hillside too?
Yes. I believe not only will you see an improvement from the contractor, but I think that you will also see them be held accountable, which I think in the past may not have been happening.
Okay, with that, thank you, Nicole. That was very informative, and I like what I heard. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Vote call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilman Costellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passes four zero. Okay, our next item was pulled, also number 15, by Councilman Costellanos.
Actually, we don't have to pull that one. Nicole answered that successfully about drought tolerant plants in the last one, so thank you for that, too.
Okay, since it was already poured, you won't make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Vote call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilman Costellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passes four zero.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Okay, regarding, I think, on this issue is, okay, who is the person is going to make sure, okay, the money they spend, okay, and, okay, that they really, okay, doing a good job, okay, meaning, okay, who is doing the audit, make sure, okay, the money we spend and we get the performance?
So, again, we do have the contracts coordinator, but what we also have is a weekly meeting that happens with our contractors out in the parks and in the right-of-ways and the landscape maintenance districts, and that's improved communication significantly. We're addressing issues regularly. We're having communication with city staff and the contractor. So, it's not just that the contractor's out there and not being watched and not being held accountable. The accountability level has increased, and will continue to do so.
Yeah, and again, okay, I think the resident complaining is, okay, some of the, okay, sprinkled, okay, in their neighborhoods, public areas, okay, either on and off in the kind of wrong time. And now, you put it, install the new system. So, who is going to supervise? Again, you say we have a contract supervisor to take a look, so make sure, okay, and everything will be proper, proper maintenance, and that the money we spend, okay, then the resident will be happy, why then they feel like they waste their money?
Right. And I think what you brought up is a good point, and something we've talked about internally, is that you brought this up in a previous item. We want to put things in that we can maintain and that we can move forward and fund. So, that's, we're trying to be efficient with what we're doing and cost-effective.
Exactly. We don't want to plant the tree, and then we cannot take care of the tree, and the tree die, and nobody even taking care. This is the same token, because I see so many, and then if same token, we don't want to install something, we spend the money, then later on, nobody taking care, and then it become horrible, and that is something I kind of worry. I want to make sure, okay, even this low maintenance, but somebody's still taking care, so the neighborhood look good, okay. Again, I think people, one is this, we spend the money, and we live in this neighborhood, we want to look nice for our area. When you walk on the street, walk on this, okay, green belt, and everything look nice and neat. Again, they feel like the extra tax that they pay is worth it. That's my point.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 16, which I pulled this one, because we already voted. You call it. Yes. I was on top of this this time. You off based on this one. Okay, okay. I pulled number item 16. I don't have a problem with the contract the way it is, but you know, there's a lot of misinformation on this. Like, we laid off some maintenance people at 237, saving the city 237,000. Now, we're doing this for 238,000. What we need to do is get the good information out to the residents, what exactly is being saved on this whole maintenance. Please, the city management.
Certainly. So, I've been seeing those correspondence go around the community, and appreciate the mayor sharing with it. As part of this year's budget, we made some changes to the staffing at the city yard. When we did so, we projected approximately $800,000 was going to be saved if we implemented by November 1st those changes. We did so much earlier, so we anticipate moving forward, not just this year, but future years, these changes are gonna save the city well over $1 million by those changes at the maintenance department, and that was part of the adoption of the fiscal year 18, 19 budget. A quarter, about 200,000 of that dollars was general fund dollars, okay? That is after we put a budget together for the award a bid for city restroom maintenance. We projected that, and we actually had a contract, a temporary contract being in place with the merchants, for $26,000 a month or $330,000 a year. We're coming back to you after we've done the bidding process with a lower amount. And so, we're gonna save even more funds now, based on this moving forward. So, I know there was some misinformation saying that we did not budget for this. We did. And now, we're coming back to you with a lower amount, because we went out to the RFP process to do so. We, so, I'm gonna tell you again, in September is when we implemented this, which we project moving forward over a million dollars of savings of general fund and special funds. That included putting money aside of general fund dollars to do park maintenance of the restrooms, okay? And that was to do a temporary agreement with merchants at the time until we. a temporary agreement with Merchants at the time, until we get to do the RFP process. We're now coming back to you with the completed RFP process, asking your approval for Azteca to take it over rather than Merchants, because they have come back with a proposal that is cheaper. And so we're going to save even more money for the city of West Coast moving forward.
Is there any more questions?
So the laying off the, of the twenty-one maintenance workers, how much did it save the city?
Cut to all maintenance staff, both part-time and full-time, generated savings of approximately one point five million dollars.
Annually?
Annually. And that's general fund and special funds, including sewers, maintenance districts, gas tax, property, all the different miscellaneous funds. We budgeted for, at that time, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars for the parks contract, to replace the employees that we were losing, okay? We had a temporary agreement in place with Merchants for that, and we told the council, we are going to put this in place temporarily, so we can get this RFP process done, which we're now coming back to you with an RFP process with the, with the restrooms. So we're still, even after this, we're still going to save well over a million dollars a year of general fund and special funds.
You want to go? Okay. The question, I, I understand, you save fifty thousand dollars, okay, and now you're changing from Merchant to Azteca, okay, and Azteca is previously currently, I, my feelings didn't perform that good. So can we, will we be guarantee we save fifty thousand, and they cannot clean the bathroom like, okay, Merchant doing currently? Because sometimes the, the cheaper not necessarily the best, okay. And I'm worried about is due to, feel like, okay, Merchant take over, okay, Azteca for the maintenance, okay, and maintenance, okay, and now, okay, and Azteca take over, okay, the bathroom cleaning, okay, it's like only these two, you and me, me and you, okay. So, so will, will Azteca could do a better job to clean our bathroom, this is my question. And plus, I understand it's fifty thousand dollars cheaper, and then Merchant is about hundred thousand dollars cheaper. So I think it's good saving for Merchant doing better job, and save hundred thousand dollars, I saw the, the, the budget. But for this, okay, and bathroom cleaning, okay, we save fifty thousand dollars, do we, can we get the same, okay, and, okay, cleaners, okay, their performance?
I absolutely cannot guarantee you that the cleanliness will be better. Merchants has done a phenomenal job, staff enjoys working with them. If we kept Merchants, there would be a continuity of service. However, it's a one-year agreement, because we're going to go out to bid for all services for parks, including the restrooms, in one year's time. So would not be prudent of staff to come before you and recommend a contract that's fifty thousand dollars more expensive, knowing that Azteca performs work in other parts of the city, and to be honest with you, other than in a couple areas of LMDs, we're not getting a lot of complaints. So both contractors perform well in the eyes of the city staff. If council has the prerogative, one of the options is to go with Merchants and award the contract to Merchants. That's at the discretion of the council. But I cannot guarantee the service would be better, and obviously, when you transition service, there can be another hiccup in, in the customer service and in the cleanliness. I can't guarantee it, but what I can tell you, tell you before you is that it's a cheaper contract, and they provide service to other facilities.
I, I like the cheaper, fifty thousand dollars, okay. But I, I really do not, okay, the answer, I kind of worry, because I cannot guarantee, I cannot guarantee, but you can say, I think they can do okay job, and that we save fifty thousand dollars, then I would be okay. But you say I cannot guarantee, it's like, I'm not going to guarantee on this thing, I don't trust them. So it kind of made me worry about if we approve this, save fifty thousand dollars, and end up, they don't do a good job. And, and our resident complained big time regarding they go to the little leak, and the bathroom is filthy, okay. So, so I want to make sure we spend the money wisely. This is two hundred forty, how much? Two hundred thirty thousand dollar, right, or one year, right?
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand with Azteca.
So about twenty thousand dollars a month for sixteen parks, all bathroom, right? How many parks, how many bathrooms?
Sixteen city parks.
So sixteen bathrooms?
Yeah, yeah, so it's a set, a set.
So, so you're asking me to tell you whether or not I think that they can do an okay job? Sure, I can tell you that they can do an okay job.
Do an okay job.
But I don't think that okay is what the residents want. I don't think okay is what the staff wants or what the council wants. I'm not saying they will do a poor job. What you're asking me is to guarantee that they are going to perform at the same level of Merchants, and I cannot guarantee that. What I can tell you is that Merchants has been doing the service for the last few months, and they've done a phenomenal job. We've received less complaints in the last few months than we have in a matter of a week. So, I mean, I'm telling you, they're doing an awesome job. However, I'm bringing before you to award a contract to Azteca. I think they're a competent company, I think they are capable of doing it, but will they do the same or a better job? I can't say that.
We have to give them one year, can we give six months, try, try, try our area?
Unfortunately, the RFP was for a year, and to be honest with you, if we were going to go with only six months, I don't think that we'd have the same deal that we had, because they have to onboard staff.
Do we have any clauses in the contract, even if it's a one-year contract, saying if they're not doing the job, we can cancel it at any time? That's, no, that should be a clause?
We have a termination clause.
Of course. We always have a termination clause with our service agreements.
So, so when we see this, okay, one month, two months, okay, we don't like it, we're going to terminate.
Yeah, we can. Just keep in mind that then we would go back to having to come back before you with an urgency item, because it's our restroom, so we can't leave those uncleaned.
Of course. Then we can have maybe Merchant coming back to pick up the pieces, okay.
Okay, is there any other questions? If none, I'd like to move this item forward. I have a motion.
No other questions, yeah.
Oh, go ahead, push.
No, no other questions.
Oh, no, I have a motion, I have a second then.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, and roll call please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passage three to one. Okay, our last item is item number seventeen, and that is pulled by Councilwoman Lopez.
So with this, my only concern is you have three contractors, yet there's only one bid price. The other one says no bid, and I do understand that it said both contractors were called, given additional opportunities, but they didn't, because they were unable, unable to do the project. Is there more contracts that, on the list that you have? Normally, I mean, same thing with me, if I have to put something in, at least two bids, so you have something to compare and contrast with. I just, just didn't like the fact there's only one bid, and I have no reference to look at anybody else, and, you know, there's other contractors to look at.
I, I agree with my fellow councilwoman. That did concern me, that there were no other bids. I did get an explanation from, from Chris as to why, but I did notice also in the staff report, that projects below forty-five thousand may be completed by the city's workforce. So I also wanted to know if, can, can we handle something like that, and would it be beneficial? But also, I think Letty's going in this direction, in cases in the future, when we don't get the full amount of bids that we're seeking, can we, can we do something about that?
Good evening, council. In this instance, I'm the one that reached out to the contractors, and this was a time-sensitive issue because of the facility itself. And what I was finding is, is that the size of the project and the amount of work it was, people weren't interested in doing it. They, they were talking to us, but they're like, no, we can't get that into our schedule for the next sixteen, eight months and do that. Our practices here has been contact three vendors on a project this size, and that's how we move forward. Time constraints was the main thing that we did, you know, the main thing behind the decision to move forward with this, because we wanted to make sure that the complex was up and running, when the season started, and it did not affect play. If we had more time, we definitely would have reached out to more vendors.
And about city staff completing, I mean, I know we're short on people, but would that even be remotely possible with our resources?
Well, I'm not understanding, do you mean our staff? Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I was clarifying. Currently, no, we do not have a welder on staff. We didn't, you know, our crew is not, is not able to do that.
So we don't have the right skills?
Correct.
My other question is, I don't know exactly how it's going to be built and so forth. I know when we have our fields to reseed, we just get a temporary fence around the grass area to prevent the grass. Is, how it's going to be built, does it prevent people from jumping over and still utilizing the area? Is it only covering the grass area, or is it just the whole complex?
The area that it's going to cover, it actually, the issue we have at that park is the bathroom is behind the hockey rink, so there still needs to be access to the, to the, to the bathroom for the public in the front. So the gate will go from along the school property, there'll be a gate to close off, and then it'll go around along the walkway, and go all the way around the bathroom, so there will always be access to the bathroom. We were putting up temporary fencing, but, you know, that has a cost as well, and we were having issues with people breaking it. We've, you know, we've had, that field is never not used. I've been out there at two in the morning, and people have had their cars and lights out there using it. So the fence itself will be seven feet tall, it will match the hockey rink fencing to make the park look uniform, and we, we hope that it'll deter people from using it when it's closed.
Thank you.
And what, Chris, you did mention to me, how, how long, could you tell us the length of the fence again, please?
Certainly. I shall let Mr. Cressa respond to that, because he's the one who provided it.
Okay, thank you.
The fence is three hundred linear feet, the gate will be twenty, twenty-seven feet wide, and then there will be a gate on the, next to the bathrooms that will actually access the skate park.
Thank you.
Is that, I know we only have a one bid comeback, but is that legal, we only have one bid for this RP? It's okay? And do we, do we, how do we know we get the best price for this? I, I know we need this fence, okay, but my, my question is just, how do we, okay, where this money coming from? It's from, okay, park, restricted fund, right?
Park fence.
Park fund, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so how do we know this really is the, is the best of the money we use for this fence?
So that's what Mr. Cressa was saying, is that if we had more time in order to meet our deadlines, we would continue to reach out to other vendors. But at this time, we have been unable to find other vendor willing to do the work within the time period we need. And we haven't explained that well to the public what that means. When the soccer program is on recess, we go back out there and we redo the field, and then we put the fence up, and or keep people off the field, so the field has the opportunity to regenerate itself. And so it's very important for our playing surface to have time where it's called downtime, to be reseeded and done. So this fence is going to provide that, but also provide security for the facility as well.
I'd just like to make one other statement. You know, I've done a lot of wrought iron in my days, a lot of it. No, what I'm just saying, that's why I didn't have a problem with this, that gate itself would cost anywhere between eight to ten thousand, just for the twenty-six foot gate, seven foot tall, a wrought iron gate. It's very, I think this price is, is a great price. I don't think if you got one or two more bids, you would have come any closer than this. I think you probably would have even made it more, I think it still would have been the lowest one. So I, me looking at it, and, I mean, my profession, that's what I did all my life. So I'm just saying that I don't have a problem with this. So myself, I'd like to say move forward.
If mayor say so, I move to approve.
I'll comment that, Lloyd, I, I agree, Mr. Mayor. That's a very long fence, and, and, and I built them myself, and I hired people, and that's probably a pretty good price. So I'm glad to see that part of it. But I, you know, did want to bring up the part about no bids, but I understand the response, so thank you for that.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a first and a second, roll call please.
All first, I mean, all motion, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Definitely aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passage four zero. Now we should go, that's done with our consent calendar. Now we shall move to item number eighteen, which is a Mother May I by Councilman Wu.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I, I, okay, I think it's a, just like all the, okay, the old, they're talking about the public safety is, okay, so important, okay. We have this firestorm happen almost every year, and we even have to send two engine to support some other city, okay, and, and I understand currently we have a this budget issue. So I, I really want to see, okay, do we have any possibility, have the city looking to any potential grant, okay, or funding, for example, a safer grant, so we can kind of potentially bring this engine number four back. And the, and the most important thing, okay, because, okay, on my Mother May I, I request is looking to the higher more staff, okay, to, to cut down the overtime, okay. Right now, I think my understanding, we only have about fifty-six firefighter, okay, and on duty, okay. Basically, a hundred twenty thousand population of, okay, city, and last time we, we went through this, okay, it's a one per one thousand, so we should be have maybe a hundred twenty. Of course, we cannot afford the many of firefighter, but we got cut down to fifty-six, I think really become a, a issue, a public safety issue. So I really look into it, okay, any potential grant, or safer grant, or any, okay, finance, okay, we can have, for example, how we cut down eighty percent of overtime, using the, the new higher staff to compensate for, of this. So this is my request, Mother May I, and hopefully, my colleague can agree, and to have city looking to potentially bring the, not right now, but see when we have this ability to look into the engine number four, plus, can we look into the higher of more of, okay, of, okay, firefighter, okay, to reduce, okay, our current, okay, about three point five million dollars of overtime. And if we can reduce to eighty percent, and with a new hire, I think we can compensate possible two million dollar saving, based on my calculation. So hopefully, city can look into this, so bring back to us, okay, and in detail, so we can look into it. Thank you.
I'd like to make a, make a comment. At this time, you know, I really, as far as bringing back engine four, at this time, we really can't afford it. It's one point three, four point five million dollars. I don't have a problem bringing it back during the budget, so we can discuss it during our budget, but right now, we don't have the funds for it. So I think we're trying to go down the wrong path right now with it. So as, tonight, really, I couldn't afford the, afford, I mean, I couldn't support the Mother May I moving forward.
Can I say something?
Okay, I, I really don't think it's okay. Everything have to go to budget last minute to see this. I think we should kind of look into it, and see what kind of, earlier, okay, we prepared this, we might have a more chance to see what our option, okay. While we always thinking about the cut, this is the only way to balance the budget, I, I don't think this is the right way. We, we have to see, I, I've been saying so many, so many times, how can we use a new hire to, to reduce our overtime, and how can we use, okay, some of the service, not necessarily we create, okay, more our burden, okay, we will look into some other way, okay, to improve our public safety. I think, okay, public safety is so important, okay, and we really have to see any other way, okay, to, to do some kind of, okay, out of box, okay, of a thinking, of a calculation, see what we can do. I, I, I understand, for people thinking about, hey, how can we hire more people to balance the budget? But what I'm talking about, if we paying the one that have time overtime, okay, and for the senior staff, and let's create a, a, a big issue, and plus, just like I said before, forced overtime, it become an issue, okay, for our city, okay, and how can we look into, okay, and how many people were hired, and compare with, okay, overtime, and we, I want to see the number, okay. At the same time, if we have engine number four, we can spread out, okay, and, and get the shift, and hopefully, we can reduce a lot of overtime situation. And, and this is my, okay, request of it, okay, and the Mother May I, and hopefully, and, okay, we have, I have a second to have city looking to it.
I, I would like to explore our city's ability to see what we can do here. I think we, I'd like to see if we can achieve multiple goals of, at least trying to improve morale, looking at, as Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Wu said, the possibility of new hires helping with the forced overtime, and, and the overtime costs, and just providing the services that our residents need. I, I think I'd like to at least be very well-versed in all of these figures before we have to adopt a budget. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, if there's no other comments, we have a first and a second, we have a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No, passage three to one. Okay, item number nineteen, whereas that's, that's also yours.
Okay, and regarding the, the potential fire hazards, okay, I think we, we talked so many time, okay, and, okay, maybe we talk about maintenance district, and how we, we clean up, okay, all those area. So I want the city to maybe look into, okay, how we have So I want the city to maybe look into, okay, how we have so many areas overgrown tree, overgrown, okay, the brush, the bushes, okay, and overgrown tree, some of the tree never been touched, okay, and in the public area, okay, maybe we can see, look into it, okay, what kind of way, okay, do we have enough of fund to go to the cycle for five years? You can see a lot of city to get burned down, okay, thousand oak, they have a tree. And plus, okay, when we have, okay, windstorm, a lot of tree collapse and create a lot of damage. And especially, we, the city has a lot, a lot of overgrown tree. So we really have to see far to protect, okay, our city and our, okay, resident life and poverty value, all those things. So I want the city to look into, okay, how can we do the cycle for seven years to five years? At the same time, okay, see all the area to make sure, okay, we don't have those of fire hazard area. Okay, that's my motion.
I'm not going to make it long, but I agree. I'd like to see if we could learn more about that, so I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Pass is four zero. Item number 21.
No, 20.
Oh, 20, I'm sorry. Number 20. That's yours too.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is, again, go back to the public safety is a base of quality of life, okay? If we don't have public safety, okay, and like the, our resident, the situation, okay? And I understand, okay, the budget issue, I understand, okay? I run a company, if I don't have a budget, I will auto business. So we really have to spend the money while we have. But we have to look into it. I said it so many times again, on this Mother May I, it's missing is, okay, look into the new hired, okay, to, we have a lot of, okay, our police department are ready to retire. They are 350, so they're 47, 40, quite a lot of them. So we have the, starting to recruit, okay, and to have hopefully P1, P2, okay, and the police officer, maybe 10 or 15 of them. And if we're talking, okay, 10 or 15 of them is about 1.5 million dollars compared with our overtime, possible four or $5 million. So hopefully with that, we can gradually, okay, and, okay, reduce this overtime, out of control overtime budget. And another thing is, okay, this overlap, okay, shift, okay, this is the problem, okay? I understand that create the overtime thing and then that create, at the same time, when you retreat, okay, so many, okay, the staff, then they create two issue, okay? One issue is response time, okay, and it become delayed. And when we have a delayed issue, then we cannot even send now, okay, and the patrol car, the police officer to protect our resident. So that's some of the issue. And then myself, okay, when, remember, okay, I have accident at the Cortez and Citrus, okay, and 6:30 I call, okay, when I get, okay, hit big time, a T-bone, I wait for an hour, okay, and nobody show up, okay? So I understand this has become a really a issue. What we have to do is we really to see through what we can improve our public safety. And again, okay, and we need to maybe see how can we use the new hire, okay, and to reduce the force overtime and plus, okay, so-called, okay, so, okay, stress of special thing. If we only have a six, seven police officer in the 120,000 of population, okay, and it's absolutely, okay, the response time would be very, very slow, okay? And I have no complaint about the people didn't show up because I didn't injure, I just have a car have major damage, okay? I cannot even come out of my car, okay? But the point is, how can we, okay, improve our public safety service, okay? And maybe we can look into, explore into, okay, the compensate, the overtime, new hire and overlap shift, okay, and make sure, okay, and our public have been protected by our police department. So I want to make a motion to look into it, okay, and we bring back overtime, okay, shift and plus a new hires, okay, so to reduce the overtime and see the number and the budget that is feasible. Again, this is just starting, see, bring back and we discuss, see, okay, financially we can afford it or not. And but I understand, I strongly believe if we hire more of P1, P2, okay, and show more of a police presence, reduce the overtime, okay, and reduce the stress of our police, okay? I think that will, okay, you can see maybe beginning, we see a little bit, okay, and the deficit, but in the long run, due to you have more staff and you reduce this forced overtime, so, okay, and we make sure they don't abuse the overtime system. And I think we can balance the budget, saving more money, okay? And so I want to make a motion for that.
I think we can all agree that we want more police on the streets. In regards to this, I do like to see, to explore different options to make it happen. So I know this is possibly one of the options, but I'd like to have more police out there. So let's make it happen. Thank you.
And I do agree on one thing that we definitely need to report police, but you know, at one time, we said our police chief saying that you have to cut your budget by 10% to balance the budget. And this is one of the options that was given to the POA to do it. And from what I understand, it was taken back forth and there was nothing to compromise one way or the other. So if this council thinks you can afford to put it back on there and make the budget go over for what it is now, that's your prerogative, but I can't do it. So we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Council, Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No. Pass is three to one.
Okay, now we're on item number 21. Let's see that it goes to Councilman Costalanos.
Okay, so it states, I'd like to see all of us up here and then the council have, say, in the hiring of department heads and the employment contracts. I mean, that's basically, I'd like for us to have an opportunity to collaborate with, with each other and be a part of the process. So that's the nature of this request.
Well, I'm going to fill my two cents on that. I think when we start doing this, we're going down the wrong road. You know, we're not in here to hire and fire regular department heads or anybody else. We're here to make sure we set policy and that the policies that we set are followed. When we start going down that road, taking the ability out of our city manager to hire and fire, what you're trying to tell him is that, that if we have somebody that we like, for example, and you don't hire him, now we're putting the blame on him. We have to start separating ourselves. If we don't tell our city manager, you have the right to hire and fire department heads because if they're not doing their job or they're not qualified, to us not doing this type of job all the time, if we look at somebody, we talk to them, we might think that they're qualified, but in the long run, they're not qualified, the blame comes back on us. It shouldn't be. It should be our city manager. If he hires somebody that's not qualified, then it's up to us to go back on him, say, you're not doing your job to hire somebody that's not qualified. I think once we start going down this road, we're going down the wrong road. It's not our job to hire and fire department heads or any other employees. It's our job to set policy and make sure that policy is set the right way. It's our job to hire and fire our city manager. It's our job to hire and fire our city attorney. It's the city manager's job to hire and fire anybody else that works for the city. So that's my comment and I can support that. Any other comment?
I actually agree with what you said. I just want to make sure that we have, that we do have a say and an ability to collaborate and have a voice.
I don't necessarily say that, I mean, the city manager does have the right to hire and fire. I'm not taking that, his job away from him. I just, he can do, he can hire and fire, but it's more, it's just more like the approval, okay, yes, no. I'd like to see how other cities do it. There's just a possibility of just seeing how other, other cities look. I just want to see how it's looked into, just not hiring, firing everybody within the city, but at least the main, the heads. But just a thought. Thank you.
I have a question on your Mother May I, okay, you say the city council consider have department head subject to employment contract. So, so contract, okay, or at will? I don't know, just, okay, because right now it's at will, right? We currently are at will, right? So, so over here, so you want to do a contract?
No, great, great question. I did ask Chris about that and Chris mentioned to me that it is at will. Is that correct, Chris? Yeah, yeah, it's.
So it's a at will, okay? And so your request is basically is just a concord, meaning it bring who you want to hire, the police of, okay, or, okay, and we just concord? That's what your proposal?
Not, not just concur. I want us to be a part of the process as well as, well, as you pointed out, the contract or the at-will employment. So part of the whole process, not just the approval of the employment agreement, final process.
So your request is similar, like the school board, they hire somebody, the school board have to concur about just like such things? I want to understand.
Yes, you're, you're, great, great question. You're correct. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. Ray?
So question, I know it says employment contracts. So if you hire and we get the contract, are we just saying yes or no to the contract itself or can we say yes or no to the contract because it's linked with that individual?
So my understanding based on the current comments is that right now, department heads are at will, as well as the city manager. I have an employment contract that's made with the city council. If we go down the path, what I understand is, is that the city council will be helping select the department heads moving forward and not the city manager, which sounds like a different form of government to me, rather than city council, mayor, former government. It's more like mayor, council, former government. So I'm not sure if that's the path, the intent to go down that path or have it where city manager proposes a director and it's, the consensus is done by the city council via an employment contract. Typically, what you'll see in other cities is they're at will like we currently have. Some cities, I think, if you look at Glendora, has individual contracts with the department heads. Azusa does the same as well. And that allows the opportunity for the city manager working with the council that if you want an individual, you know, really bad in your community, certain, with certain skill sets, you negotiate that contract similar to what you would do with the city manager, provide a severance package and other benefits for that director. The only other city that I'm aware of that does it the way I think it's being proposed by Mr. Costalanos is next door in Baldwin Park, where the employees actually work for the city council and not the city manager.
Yeah, that's, that's the direction I want to go and that's the nature of this request.
So you want to go with, okay, and the Baldwin Park styles to, okay, to employee will be basically, okay? My suggestion, due to we are all part-time, okay, I think we should respect, okay, the city manager letting him to choose, okay, and he can bring the candidate to us, okay, in public, then we concur, okay? Because he is a professional, get paid for this, okay? And he hired the person he thinks is right, but he have to give us, since we represent a resident, then we, we kind of review it, ask a couple of questions, okay? And if we approve in majority, and then the rights to the city manager. I think maybe would be better than, because we are part-time, we don't really want to get into the city business, okay? That's my suggestion, maybe.
That's a good point. That's a good point. My main objective was just for us to have a voice and a say and a part of the process. But I do agree, Chris should have the final say. I just want us to be a part of the process.
I think, let the city manager to choose the person he thinks is right, but at least he can kind of, it's right now, he hired, or we have no idea who they are, we don't even know who get hired, but the key person, but the key person maybe who get hired will be introduced to us, then we just formally say, oh, this is nice. I don't think we will decline, but at least we, as a city council, we present the people, okay, we will say, oh, just like school board or something. I think maybe that would be better than we get into the city manager employment, okay, and that kind of thing, okay? I think we should still respect the city managers, still the CEO, okay, let him run the show, but we concur about the person, yeah, go ahead.
You know, it sounds wonderful, but realistically, here's a concern I do have. We have a department head that we're taking from another city that we want to hire. You say no, they could lose their job in that other city. Because if they're at will in another city and the other city's not happy that they're out looking for another job, they can actually let them go for being at will as well.
It also delays the process. So, you know, you're adding a few weeks, you know, I realize if you want to hire the right person, maybe a few weeks doesn't matter, but that does add to the time if they, if they don't get approved, then it adds more time.
Is that possible, we can maybe, I don't know, this is, okay, get to bring back to see any, any suggestion, okay, to compensate, okay, Council, Councilman Costalanos, okay, maybe, at least city council have some say, okay, concur since, okay, represented people and just like any school board and any, okay, all the, you go to, okay, Congress, you go to state this and that, when they hire some people, they have the Congress to approve with this and that, okay? So I can understand why he, but I absolutely don't want to gain more your business about who you hire.
Right. Let us chat a little bit more with the city attorney, because the other option is perhaps some sort of ratification process goes through closed session. The problem is, you know, everyone eventually finds out if someone's applying for that job, still even if they're in closed session. It gets out there one way or another from, the media gets contacted by a neighboring city or somebody else. So we do need to make sure we're protecting the privacy of the applicants as well. So if we can, rather than just, you know, having a vote on this, let's have a little chance to chat it through. One of the other items we have to look at as well is.
I'm sorry, but this is Mother May I, right? This is Mother May I basically is just see if any possibility, if it's not feasible, then we don't do it. But again, I think maybe, okay, I don't know, okay, this is.
I'm okay with both your comments. I think we should discuss it further and I'm open to the method you described, Mayor Protem Wu. So, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
So what are we doing? We just going to put it on hold or we're going to bring it back?
The Mother May I want to bring it back or you want to?
I want to move forward, but I want us to talk about it and study it and see what we can do protecting everybody's interests. Like you said, I wouldn't want anybody to not get hired and also lose their job.
I still can't support it because we're still going down the wrong road. If the city manager wants to hire a department head and he's talking to them about coming in, and if we have to even bring it out, open it before he hires him, and something happens, that person could lose their job because they're doing the same thing. I've never seen a problem with it in the future. To me, it's one of those things, if it's now broken, why would we want to even think about fixing it? He's doing, he's doing a good job on hiring department heads. You know, we just, we've lost a few department heads already to other cities. Now, if they would have had the same process and where their council had to okay him, and what if something happens, the council said, no, we don't want you. You know, we can't accept what the city manager is saying. That person's out of the job because they've already put their notice in here that they're leaving. So the city manager says, you know, you're already putting, you're already going someplace else, unless you're not happy here. I think when we start going down that, well, we're going down the wrong road. So I can't support this.
One, I know it's at will, but two, it's not necessarily, well, for me, it's not necessarily supporting this exact thing, but for me, I'm just curious, what does other cities do? I'd like to know. I like to always compare and contrast. So for me, it'd be more, not to turn this one down, I mean, obviously, the city manager has a right to pick and choose, which is your job, but I, I'm just curious on what other cities do. If I could just get a comparison and how it works, how it works out and so forth, then I'll be okay to just move forward and compare and contrast, just to see. Thank you.
Well.
You want to make a motion or what?
Yeah, I'll make a motion too.
You have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No. Pass is three to one.
Okay, item number 22 is still, Councilman Costalanos.
Similar to what we discussed. Similar to what we discussed earlier with the landscape maintenance sister contracts, and Chris, you already did provide me, uh, how the purchasing works. I just want to, um, get a more detailed report and also, you know, make it more transparent for everyone to see that we're always working our, doing our best to get the best prices across the board on absolutely everything we purchase and contract for.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to what I shared with Councilman Costalanos earlier, is after the, the completion of the state audit that was done a few years back, one of the deficiencies was not having a strong purchasing policy of the city of West Covina. Since that time, we've actually adopted the purchasing policy a couple of times. And so, what I shared with him is, it's always a good idea, especially with new council members, we can bring it back for the city council for discussion and see, um, you know, what the difference is between the public works code and the purchasing issues, because that, for one of the things, we probably have to amend it anyway, because after the first of the year, the public works code is going to be changing as far as purchasing. So, it's a good time to update it as well as review for the, for the public and the council.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll call.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passes four zero. Item number three, twenty-three is also Councilman Costalanos.
Well, I think our residents spoke about this in open, in oral communications earlier, as well as we had a representative from the county, which I was really happy to see. I think we're, we're, we're taking steps in the right direction, and we just need to keep it going. What you've done already with the Union Station agreement with the county, that's, that's, that's wonderful, and I just want us to keep going down that path and, and show our residents that we're trying everything we can, and that's what this is about.
Okay, so you have the comments?
So, you, you, you request what kind of agency, okay, they can provide to work with us, okay, and for the homeless issue? Am I right?
Yeah, the, the county, working closer with the county. And from what I heard today, uh, Hill de Solis, I think, is very interested in helping us. Sounded like there are some, um, other board members from other areas that might not be, might not share the same thoughts about what cities need, but, uh, I just want to keep moving in the direction of working with the county and even state or federal governments, if, if possible, to do everything we can to speed up the help to the homeless and, and address the safety of our residents. So, mainly county with Measure H funds, but also I'd like to explore everything, everything else we could do.
Okay, and so, so basically, you want the city to provide some kind of agency, we can work together, joint agency, and what kind of option we can have? Am I right?
I think we've done that tonight by announcing that we're that partnership with Union Station, and what we plan to do as well is the different partners, Union Station, LSA, Department Mental Health and others have volunteered to come and have a, a public community meeting where they can talk about the services they provide, the interaction with the city and the community and the homeless population. And so, we'll try and put all that together and have that sometime in January, February of next year as well.
Yeah, that, that's great. And I have been emailing some county representatives, and they've expressed to me that, that they'd, they'd love to work with us and that they'd love for us to reach out to them more often, and that's something that we'll certainly do, and we, we won't stop working.
So, so possible, we can find a way to coordinate, okay, all those potential agency, we can, we receive the help, so we can work together, like last time, we have a sheriff, okay, to work on this, they said every, every three months, we can have a community outreach for those population to kind of, okay, help them. So, maybe this what, I will maybe request this report, including what we can coordinate together and the scheduling about how to address, okay, approach this homeless population, how can we help them, and to, okay, some of, like, you, you, you mentioned the Union Station, okay, and the agency that can help us, okay, hopefully can help those, okay, resident, uh, not resident, the people, okay, the, the, the person we love home.
Correct. And I don't see a follow-up report at this time, unless the council has other ideas, because again, it's more about announcing that partnership, moving forward with the community meeting, and wait and see what happens, like the Measure H funding to, or application. So, once we have those updates and we start moving forward in progression, then we can come back and see what other alternatives are out there as well.
And we'll have that report mid-January, roughly, or the answer about the funds?
About mid-January, so yes, we'll have that answer, and we'll, we'll make sure we announce it to you folks.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, if there are any more comments? If not, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Is it approve or just receive and file?
Oh, receive and file.
Okay, item number twenty-four is Councilwoman Lopez.
All right, the last three. So, we're here, we have the residents take back your neighborhood, and this is an area where I can see our residents and community focus, and so, right here, I'd like to promote volunteerism in the police department to help address code enforcement, some of the issues we have. Obviously, we only have two code officers, and especially now that we're going to be getting this vendor side thing, our, our code enforcement is not going to be able to do everything. Code enforcement during my walks, a lot of residents had concerns about like their neighbor's yard, or their neighbor's backyard, or their car and everything. They mentioned that code enforcement was not happening as much as it should be, there's, in different areas that I was at. So, currently, I know we have a volunteer, but it says you have to be forty years or older to volunteer. So, I want that to be changed. Also, I'd like to see our code enforcement increase, uh, well, either cadets, part-time, but primarily on this one is the volunteers for our residents. If some of the residents said they want to volunteer and take action, this is a perfect opportunity to do so, so that our city can stay clean and safe.
If I can, if you'd like to, I can ask the police chief to come forward, there's some other actions they are already starting to take to addresses, and so that way, he can explain what's going on, and I think we've had a discussion earlier today, he might be pleasantly happy about the age limit too. So, Chief Taylor?
So, I'm in total agreement. I mean, volunteers are very important to our department, and they have been for many years. So, um, you know, one of the things we looked at is developing an intern position for code enforcement. Unfortunately, the person that was selected for that position did not pass background, so we have to kind of go backwards a little bit. We still have a list, and we're going to move forward with that. Through our HR department, we're looking at testing for cadets, so part-time employees, and we're going to look at putting cadets into that position. They haven't currently been in there. So, we can use part-time people to augment the two full-time staff people. Volunteers also, because a lot of times, they get bogged down with paperwork, administrative type things. So, a lot of times, the volunteers can help do some of the paperwork inside, so we have our people out in the field. And the other thing is, code enforcement actually came to one of the monthly volunteer meetings, and they trained our volunteers on what to look for when they're out in the field. So, you know, abandoned cars, yards that aren't kept and everything, and they funnel that information back to code enforcement so they can take action. So, I'm in total agreement. Uh, you know, the, when I first started, the, the program first started with volunteers, the age limit was fifty-five, and so, then, now we worked it down to forty. That was changed before I came back, but, you know, I don't see age as a restriction, and I think we have a lot of people in the community that could serve very well, and I'm in total agreement with the age restriction, so.
Thank you.
And I know currently, we only have two code enforcement staff, right?
Correct.
Okay, and how soon this thing will happen? Is the Madam AI, or this, so I can, I can ask this question?
No, it's Madam AI. However, according by the way, as members request.
Okay, okay, so.
But the chief's already in the process of doing it.
Okay, so how soon we can have, and how many people we can, based on current budget issue, how many people we can hire?
I think we could easily accommodate two cadets if we can fill that position with our part-time budget. One of the things we're kind of struggling with is we're recruiting for a lot of different positions, so there's a lot of pressure on our human resources office. I mean, they're doing a great job, but we have officer recruitments, we have corporal testing, we have CSOs, dispatch, cadets, volunteers, all that, you know? So, and then, once that happens, because we're working within the police department, we have to do backgrounds. And so, we have three part-time background investigators, actually, one of them left, but we're just bringing on a new person that's already been to background school, a former employee, to help speed up that process, because that's the part that typically takes the longest, is getting those backgrounds done. So, um, we haven't actually had the test yet for cadet. It's, it'll be coming shortly after the first of the year, and we'll try to expedite that process.
Got it. I, I, I think it's possible, due to this Madam AI, maybe if this approve, I, I, maybe more detailed question at time, see what is feasible, how long it's take for us to get how many people, and how you spread out, okay, and what kind of system you're going to do. Currently, it's a, on code basis, somebody called in, and then our code enforcement go to check the property and this and that. I think future possible would be, maybe you drive around like some other city, and then they will kind of, okay, give the warning for, for code violators, okay, and in that way, they can do a correction. So, I, I don't know, possible this will be a future, you, you have more detail.
No, I agree with that, and I think the cadets would be a good source for actually driving around, logging these complaints, funneling them to code enforcement, so they can take the action. So, they can kind of be the eyes and ears out in the community and get things done quicker. So, we're not reactive, we're more proactive.
Yeah, especially, they're driving a police car, right? Okay? Yeah, they're driving around, maybe people seeing they have.
Well, maybe not black and white, but all white, but, you know, but it's definitely an official car.
Yeah, they're kind of deterred some of the police or criminal, because we have some volunteer. And no, no, I, I saw, okay, when I was walking and there were accident, and then they have a black and white show up, end up, he's a volunteer, he's not even a police officer, but he, he doing excellent, he did a good job, okay, and he show up quickly. I don't know why, it might take forever, but for that thing, he's, he show up very quick, okay, maybe twenty, thirty minutes when I was on the street, okay, and took care of the situation, and, and the young, I think she, hopefully, he go to training, and we can hire him to be our police officer, okay? So, but, but again, what I'm saying is, maybe if we let, okay, they can, okay, put a, some people park their car on the lawn and this and that, okay, to make sure, okay, we should have some code enforcement, compared with, okay, Warner and West Covina, our, our city really kind of a little bit downhill, so hopefully, you can, okay, pull it back.
Well, that was the objective for having our volunteers trained by code enforcement to look for specific violations. So, when they're out patrolling, when they're driving around, going to calls and everything, they're also looking for those violations, so they can feed that information back to code enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the intent is, we're going to move forward with this, there's no reason for it to come back, because the chief is already in the process of hiring cadets, interns, to do this process. What we can do is, once it's been implemented in different stages, we'll give you guys updates to your weekly report.
Absolutely.
It's not going to come back, then I have more question for you.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding, okay? No, just the final question, how fast, how soon we are going to have this force, and starting, okay, kind of cleaning up our city?
You know, honestly, I can't give you an exact answer, but I would hope it's in the first quarter of the new year. I mean, again, the backgrounds are what takes the, the, the longest, and the cadet process, we, we have to have the written tests, the interview process, and then, you know, the medical, some, you know, I'm hoping within, by March, that that would be achievable.
And again, it's also getting the applicants to submit too. That's the timely, I mean, the process, we got to make sure that people are actually submitting for these different positions.
So, I know that you'll be changing the age limit for, for the residents or those who want to volunteer. How long before they can start actually applying to volunteer?
Um, actually, the application is open on the police department's website. All, all the information is on there, we just need to get the age changed on there, so people have that access, so they can start applying immediately, and then we'll get the age change. We use an outside company to manage the website, so we can submit that request, it'll be changed within, with the holidays, I mean, maybe right after, we can get that done, but they can, uh, submit their application immediately, and then, again, it goes through the background process. I've also asked our, um, our lieutenant that's in charge of our volunteer program to start working on a new citizens academy for the new year. We want to start promoting that. We get a lot of applications from that program, and that'll be really beneficial. We haven't had the, uh, really, you know, we haven't had a lot of people apply in the past six months to a year, so we want to try to promote that better, website, information, getting out there about the program, and that's a good source for our volunteers, and gets them brought into the department, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, since we're going to be moving this forward, do we still have to make a motion and, and bring it through, or what are we going to do? Just, okay, make, make a motion, receive and file? I made a motion. Anybody a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right? All right. Just receive and file? Okay? Any, any objections? Okay, receive and file. Okay. Number twenty-five is also by Councilman Lopez.
Okay, so, this is again where the residents can be united to help each other out, similar to a neighborhood watch program. Recently, I don't know, two weeks ago, somebody came into, uh, well, we have a gated driveway, they went and broke into my car. There's nothing there, I don't keep anything there, but they went, the glove compartment, took all manual registration, just a bunch of paperwork, and they went around the block or so, so forth, and they just dumped it off on the street. So, there was one resident, thank you, Sarah Keeter, uh, she, uh, gathered it up. The manual was on her driveway, she picked it up, and she saw all the paperwork on the street, so she picked everything up, and she posted on social media. I'm not on social media all the time, so I do have to thank Sue. She quickly called me and said, is that you? Was that your car that they broke into? Because she has your documents. So, with that, um, I, I contacted her. She did say she called the police, it was about maybe two hours later. I, I understand that it was a low priority. So, I went to her house, I gathered all my documents, we spoke a little bit, and she mentioned that the city of La Marada partnered up with Ring, which the crime rate reduced, because they have an app where all the residents can inform each other. So, I wanted the city to see if we can partner up with Ring and have a similar, similar, like, yeah, simply, the video, Ring, video doorbell and security camera with the app, and I just wanted the city to look into partnering up with Ring as well, and see how other cities are doing it as well. I, I know there are a few cities, and I personally called City of La Marada, I spoke to the public safety analyst, and they said it, it went by really quick, and it's, it's a good program, and this is where, again, our residents can take action amongst ourselves and help each other out. So, thank you.
On this item, I don't have a problem with it, as long as we can afford it. If it's in the budget, we can do it, I don't have a problem with it.
And for this, I, that's why I'd like to see how the other cities do it, if they get it through another, um, I don't want to touch our general, I, I just want to see if there was other fundings, possibly CDVG, or, you know, to assist with the low incomes, or even the partnership with them where other, our, our residents can get a significant discount just for them to get that. So, it's not necessarily budget for us to spend, or if there's grants or something out there without touching our budget.
Okay, if that's a motion, I'll second that one. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll call.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, it passes four zero. Item number twenty-six is also belongs to Councilwoman Lopez.
Okay, so last one. So, when budgets are cut, the first thing to go is community services, and I do value, that's a field that I work at, and I believe that community services bring people together. That being said, um, I know some of the residents are concerned with some of the major ones, like Easter, or primarily Fourth of July. We're not allowed to have fireworks here, so it'd be best that our city continues to have something for our residents. Some of the residents would like to participate and be able to hold this. I understand with the budget again, but I'd like to see partnership from residents, businesses and civics groups to sponsor community events. I asked to get all the nonprofit organizations in our city, and what I know, and also the, the events. And I. And I realize that we partner up with the other organizations, but when it comes to our events, they don't necessarily partner up with us, so I'd like to see the city to be able to reach out. I know we have a West Covina Community Service Foundation, 501(c), that we were, a lot of the residents probably don't even know about this. So I want this to be out there. This is where people, if they wanted to donate specifically for special events, or if we have fundraisers, or anything that could go to that, that can be specifically used for community events. That doesn't have to touch our budget. So I'd like to implement that. I, I asked for that program. I know they said we had a site, so unfortunately, that site is getting updated, so I'd like to see when it's going to be up there, and I'd like to promote that, and move forward to see if we can still have our, at least 4th of July, and look at all our other city events, but I want to see that partnership happen. Thank you.
I, I would second that, but, okay, but I don't know, okay, can we, okay, look into, okay, what kind of program we have? Okay, I know we almost, last time, we cut everything. I don't think we even have a ACOM, right? Do we? No? Yes? No?
Again, the County Community Services Foundation budget comes to the group next meeting?
Yeah.
And you could program that back in if there's funding available?
Yeah, if we have a fund available. I really, okay, just this year, we just see so many happy faces of children, and it's very successful, like a two-part, okay, and, and I don't know how much we spent, I think a couple thousand dollars or something. Okay, I, I think it's kind of real spend, okay, if we don't have money, maybe we can ask some donation from some of business, this and that, to kind of join venture together, okay? Not necessarily, I understand the stress, okay, of our current budget, but if, if the city doesn't have a community event, is this why we need a city for, if we don't have those things? Those things kind of put people together, united, and the people will be more confident, okay, and spend money in our city. And another thing, maybe we can see what kind of program we have. And I think I talked to you regarding, okay, and, okay, my church, okay, they are willing to sponsor the Halloween Dickens, okay, and donate almost a thousand childrens, okay, but they don't know where to go. So maybe we can partner with city, have them, okay, to, okay, partner with our firefighters, our police, so we can give those candy to all those, okay, children, okay? I think they will be very, very happy, and cost city almost nothing, but at the same time, they join partnership with all the, a lot of community, okay, member, for example, churches, okay, or Kiwanis, okay, they, they did a very successful, okay, and Christmas parade, okay? I think city is very creative, okay, it doesn't cost city too much money, we have some staff over there, put a stage, and by other than that, you can see so many happy children perform, okay, and it's, it's kind of short, okay, but it's the first time, but it's unbelievable successful, okay, and, and a lot of people missed, okay, and, and my church, again, they say they want to sponsor too. They want to have a stand, and this and that, so hopefully, we can have a website, and we can promote to our city. Our city has 120,000 population, okay, a lot of entity, a lot of business, a lot of, okay, church, okay, they, they want to help out, okay, and, and maybe we can kind of work a joint venture, and, and for our resident have a sound event, and I think, again, again, I really want to support, okay, this, this is something very important for our community. So I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we have a roll call?
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Costellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, it passes 4-0. Okay, that is the last item on the consent calendar. Is there any AB 1234 conference meetings? And I don't think there is, but we had to ask anyway.
I don't have that, but I have something I want to, mother may I.
One second. Okay, now we go back, next is any council's comments? Okay.
Okay, I want to see is possible, okay, and, right now, our current budget issue, every time money we spend, we have before we reserve 20%. Am I right? Now down to 17%, correct?
That is correct.
Correct. So I want to make a mother may I, see that possible temporarily, okay, due to this time being, we can reserve down to 10%. And, and the reason why I'm saying that is this, okay, in 1996, I, I researched, okay, at that time, we closed down the BKK landfill. And the BKK landfill at that time, they, they bring, generate 4.5 million dollars to the city, okay? I, I remember, I, I hate the BKK dump, I hated dump so much, okay, it's like my Moby Dick, okay, so I really want to pick up a park or something nice over there, but, but they generate money, they generate 4.5 million dollar money, and they already budget, okay, so in that way, suddenly, 1996, we don't have that 4.5 million dollars. So, so then we have to, okay, go through a tough time. So, so that time, I remember, they, they lowered temporarily for, for 10%. When, when the city making money, then they, they increase their reserve for 20%. But what I'm saying is this, okay, is it possible city to see is, is a possible, we can temporarily, okay, during this time, to any money we spend, we reserve, rather than 70%, we down to 10%, okay, and in that way, we might be, can, can move the money around, we not, no reserve, I still want to reserve, but rather than you forced to reserve so much, and create, it's a man-made, man-made deficit, okay? Hopefully, we can using this, okay, and to balance the budget.
Okay, first, you know, I think we started reducing our reserve, we already said, it's, it's already been said, our reserve right now is set at two months, and we only have a reserve that lasts this two months, right now, with what it is. You cut it down to 10%, you don't mean like if you open a month and something happens, you don't even have enough cash flow to keep the city open for a month. Now you're talking about bankruptcy. So if you want to go down that road, to drop it down to 10% and take a chance on bankrupt in the city, that's your prerogative, but I would never, never vote to lower our reserve down to 10%.
Yeah, okay. Okay, it's just, okay, a mother may I, okay, it's not, okay, we bring back to research, okay, so, and I, I want to, I understand, okay, I don't want to run my company into bankruptcy, I don't want to run the city to bankruptcy, okay, of course not, okay, but, but at the same time, okay, right now, every money we spend, and we forced to, to put 17% on aside, and then the money doesn't use, utilize, again, I said temporarily, okay, temporarily to see is, right now, we can use this 10%, okay, and so we can free up some of the money we can use, but cannot, okay, and wasted, it has to be wisely use those money, okay, and to, to go to, okay, potential either public safety and this and that, more or less a public safety issue that we want to increase, because in that way, we can hire, okay, a new recruit, and at the same time, okay, we don't have that much of deficit, and that we can, maybe next year, reduce overtime, then we can put back to 20% reserve. So what I'm saying is this, we have to see all the way to our budget, to see what we can do, rather than continue to cut and continue to have no service, and they, they say raise taxes. Raise taxes is not going to happen like overnight, okay, it's, we still have, okay, the thing, I still strongly against, okay, raise taxes, the, the reason is this, you raise taxes, you only temporarily bandaid the problem, you still didn't, okay, control the spending issue. So while we can control the spending issue, but at the same time, we free up some of the money wisely to use those, those funds, and to balance, and most important thing, to get our public safety, to recruit more of our staff, put more of our, okay, public safety staff on the street. And, and that's why we say, we're looking toward, including entire budget, see is feasible, and this, again, this is mother may I, it's not like we're going to approve right away, and it's to city to look, is possible, okay, and do we have a lead, okay, and ability, okay, and will that damage the city, due to this has been done back in 1996, and we didn't bankrupt, okay, that time they lost 4.5 million dollars, and not, and later, we, we picked up a lot of money, but later on, in 2008, we got this fiasco of subprime crisis, then we, we went down again, and we went up, and we done, it's, it's again, the city would be like a business, would be uptime and downtime, and how see, we manage the money and make sure we can provide a service.
So are you saying to use our reserve? Because I don't like to touch the reserve? Or are you just saying, when we put money, instead of putting in 17% in, just put?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to touch the reserve.
Don't touch the reserve.
The point is this, right now, we spend every hundred dollar, we have a set 17 dollar aside. Right now, what I'm saying, we, we spend a hundred dollars, we set aside 10 dollars, so, so we spend, so right now, your budget, your budget, am I right? Your budget a hundred dollars, your budget a hundred ten dollars, a hundred seventeen dollars?
No, 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 so it's just like a savings account, there's money in the account. We're saying, you're, my understanding from your request is, you want to go into the savings account to do operational expenses?
No. No, what I'm saying is this, right now, currently, our reserve is, is from 20% down to 70% we approve.
That's correct, we have 17% in there now.
And I remember, when our budget discussion, you're always talking about the budget, okay, we spend, okay, this, then we still have a reserve, so we create this deficit, and the reserve is 20% at a time, so we create more of deficit due to we have to reserve more money.
No.
So, so what I'm saying is this, can we, okay, from the reserve, 70% temporarily down to 10% reserve? Okay, so in that way, we, we don't have to spend, okay, we don't have to reserve so much money that we cannot utilize into our public safety.
Right. So first of all, you have a right as a councilman to request a mother may I, okay? So I don't know if this is appropriate forum to have a long dialogue, but there's a lot of concerns about doing so, that we'll either bring up, we can do that tonight, well, we can't really go into detail too much tonight, but it'll be part of the mother may I. But I want to make sure you're clear, we have 17% in the bank, you're asking to tap into that for operational expenses.
No, no, I'm talking about from 70% temporarily to 10% reserve.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, if that's your...
And, and again, and in, in that way, I want to see is feasible, do we create a danger to our city?
Yes.
Okay?
But we'll bring that back to you.
But my, what I'm saying, I want to see what kind of pour and come, but at least we can explore, explore to some other way. Again, it's not try to bankrupt the city, it's try to see is feasible or not.
Sure.
And if the city can bring back, if it's not feasible, we decline, but if it's, at least we can look into is, this is another way to see, okay, again, safety, of course, one thing, but conservative, okay, is another issue, we cannot grow.
So if I can just restate, we talked, we talked about this during the budget process, okay? The reason, the professional accounting standards recommend 17% is for cash flow. We do not get all of our revenue at, every month, it comes in at different times of the year. You dip below 17%, the city may, I won't say will, but may be required to borrow money to make payroll until new money comes in. So that's the importance of maintaining a 17% reserve.
So, so that's why I want to have a detail, if you can come back to us, then, then maybe this not going to work, okay? But if, what I want to see is possible, we can have a lead option, okay? Anything is possible, right? Okay?
The council bylaw is allowed to do whatever they wish, the professional responsibility's on us.
Of, of course, we can do anything.
Yes.
I maybe don't have a majority for this, but what I'm saying, okay, and what, I want to understand the city, what they can give us some of, again, I know, when I say this, everybody like shock, oh, whoa, this and that, but sometimes you just have to go to this shocking effect to see, do we have any outlook? Okay, do we have any other way to, to do, rather than what we sit and continue, and we don't have money coming in, and we, we continue to sit over there, sitting dots, only thinking about the cut?
Well, again, I don't think tonight's provided, I think the city turn will cut us off eventually. We shouldn't be having this dialogue this evening.
Correct.
So if you wish to bring it back to the mother may I, again, what are some of the concerns that we have?
I want to see, I want to make a may I, I don't know, can I get a second, okay, see if we can explore any potential, okay, for the 10% reserve?
Again, it's a mother may I, so you're, I, excuse me, council members request for information.
I moved the motion to...
There is no motion. You, as a councilman, have the right to put it on the next agenda. And then at that point, if your colleagues say, we don't want to do any additional research, they can do that. So if you wish to put it on the next agenda, staff will put it on the next agenda for you for discussion.
The, the city council, alternatively, the city council could, you could vote three to one, saying, no, staff, save your time, there's no way we're even going to consider this.
Yeah, my, my understanding, I can, I can do it right now.
You could do that now.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that, just like that, say, staff, I don't want you wasting your time on it, because I think we're playing dangerous rounds if we go below 17%. I asked a question earlier, at 17%, how much cash flow, how much, how long can the city last? And they said, two months. If we even thinking about going down below 17%, and we have a problem that we cannot make payroll, then we have to borrow money. So I'm going to make a motion to deny it, and just, go.
Now, if I'm understanding everything, now, I'm going to consider it like similar to like your personal savings. If you have your savings, 17%, you don't want to touch, but I know certain times of your, your career, or your life, where if you have a budget, or more debt, or something, you put in less. So let's say you put in $20 a month, instead of like the first, for, for a whole six months, instead of putting in 20, you put in 10. Is that, as long as the reserve is not touched, but are you just mentioning to put in, like, if the city, and I'm not sure how much the city puts in in the reserve, I, well, 17%.
It kind of, my understanding, okay, is that, that, right now, with everything we spend, we have to put 17, okay, percent into the saving. Right now, my, my proposal is, is possible, we can look into, we only put 10%, okay, temporarily, okay, and see is feasible or not. So that is basically my mother may I.
And if it's temporarily, what will it be used for, and what, I, I mean, I, I'd like to look at all options, but I'd like to know exactly how it goes, and how to make sure we secure that.
So I, I would just want to make sure that we're all aware, so the Brown Act says we cannot have extended conversations about items that are not on the agenda. So the sole item that we can be discussing is whether to consider this at a future meeting.